Good morning. Glad to call this meeting to order and also wish all of you happy Chinese New Year. So, the Chinese New Year celebration will be at the end of the month at the Justice House, just like for that event. Supervisor Kennedy, if you'd do the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and give this all with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So, you'll notice we, our agenda's format is slightly different. We are in need of going into closed session immediately for a variety of reasons. We will, we have a 10 o'clock AM public hearing, so we will have to go right into that. Then we will resume the regular agenda, open it up with public comment. So, with that, best guess that we will hit public comment, or I'm gonna say roughly 10:15, 10:20. So, all of you can grab some coffee and see us back around a little bit after 10:00. And then those who are for the 10:00 AM public hearing will start that right at 10:00 or a few minutes after. Opening up with 1.1 of our closed session items. Government Code Section 549, 54.5c, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Number of cases, two. California Department of Water Resources versus all persons interested in the matter of the state of water, the state water project, water supply, contract amendments for continued service and terms and conditions thereof, the contract extension amendments. Sacramento Superior Case Number 34-2018-0024, 6183. Trinity, um, and Trinity Action Alliance, or Association Incorporated versus County of Trinity, Antall, Trinity County Superior Court, Number 19CV001. Item 1.2, Government Code Section 549, 54.5, public employee valuation of director of transportation. Okay, with that, we will move, unless there's any comments on closed session, we will take those.
Kaye Graves from Lewiston. I have a question about the number of law firms our county is employing and their relationships to each other and whether there's conflicts of interest or not. I'm not sure, I mean, we're now employing an entire law firm as our county council, so I would like to address why we are using outside, we are paying for another law firm.
Okay, anyone else comment on closed session items? Okay, with that, we will move into closed session and see all of you around 10:00. We are, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna immediately move into the public hearing at 10:00 and then we will start with our regular agenda with public comments. So, we're moving to 3.1. This is a time-sensitive matter under Solid Waste. Oh, there she is. Conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution which establishes a schedule of fees for waste disposal and provides for appropriate exemptions and credits for the 2019, 2020 annual solid waste parcel fee billing. No impact to the general fund revenue estimated in the amount of $900,000 to the solid waste enterprise. Good morning.
Good morning. Diane Ringer, Deputy Director of Solid Waste. This is our first annual public hearing for the parcel fee billing for the year. This is, um, sorry, I'm a little behind this morning, but, um, we, this is what, it's close to half of our revenues for the year that we bill to each of the property owners within the county. At one residential equivalent at $100, we don't propose any changes for the year. And there's a schedule of fees based on the use of the property and we offer credits for the recycling and elderly low income and...
Standard procedure?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, questions? Okay, any member of the public which wishes to speak to this item?
Kaye Graves from Lewiston. I'd like to request that when the billing comes out to the public in the agenda, that it's not listed by parcel number, that it's listed by the person's name, the way it used to be, because people don't know their partial, parcel number. And quite frankly, there are people out there that don't realize, for whatever reason, that they're on this list. So, I don't know my parcel number and it would be really helpful for the public and they'd be able to respond better and know it was actually up if we use names instead of parcel numbers.
Anyone else? Public hearing done, I'll bring the cap to the board.
Excuse me, there are some of us who may be hard of hearing and I can't hear half of what you're saying.
Okay. Bring the mic for me.
You'd like a motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to say that the board is conducting a public hearing regarding parcel fee and make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented establishing a schedule of fees.
One second.
Okay, to the board.
Supervisor Bro.
Aye.
Supervisor Finley.
Yes.
Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Chavla.
Aye.
Supervisor Moore.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will work, I will ask for a five-minute break and then we will resume. Okay. Thank you for your patience. We are back onto the regular scheduled agenda items. We'll move right into public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name to the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or scheduled matter on the subsequent agenda. All right, with that...
Good morning. My name's Hunter Nixon. I'm secretary with the Trinity Community Food Outreach, which is a nonprofit corporation dedicated to bringing more food into the county for those who need. In December, we appeared before this board and asked to be placed on the agenda concerning the Trinity County Food Bank and the position of the Trinity County Food Bank Manager. At that meeting, the board ordered the C, told the CAO to review the position in general of the Trinity County Food Bank Manager. Excuse me. I've had numerous meetings with the CAO and they've proven to be fruitless. We're now returning to this board once again to ask to be placed on the agenda for the next meeting on the 20th. I would suggest that it be the item after you've finished with your regular business. It is my understanding historically that any supervisor can place an item on the agenda and we're going to be contacting each of the supervisors this week to find one of you willing to put it on the agenda for the next meeting of the board of supervisors. Thank you.
If he has a request to put this on the agenda, I can move forward with that. If, I understand that I cannot put it on the agenda. It is abuse. So, if he wishes it's on the agenda, we can pull the board now and get this over with.
I know that he is correct. He, there has been discussions with the CAO. CAO, any thoughts or you're not quite, you're still working on it?
Working on it.
Well, I, um, we may have different opinions of fruitless. We just disagree with the amount of money that they're being asked and as the board knows, my commitment is to fully fund and make sure every dollar saved goes to funding sheriff deputies and the amount of money they're asking for with the deputy and I just said, no, we can't do that. So, yeah, maybe I may need direction from the board because we're kind of at a stalemate on the amount of money that they're requesting that I'm not willing to consider.
And there's other money you're trying to help with?
Yes, so if it was on board, I could, I could go about talking about grants and the different funds that already have been received and issued with us.
Okay. Supervisor.
I was just gonna say that, um, Richard has been working and has been doing stuff, so I wouldn't call it fruitless and these things. And I've also pledged the first $5,000 of my pay to the food bank and I just asked to maybe give it some more time and I do appreciate your time.
We will be running out of money for the acquisition in April 15. At that point, we will not have a manager of the food bank. Time is of the essence.
Anyone else in public comment?
Could I have to ask?
Sure.
Didn't, did we have a motion from John to put this on?
Just a request and if, if it's the board, if it's the chair's pleasure to request from the board.
Does the board wanna?
Yes.
Manager, okay. I don't know if the 20th will work for CAO. I think he's still working.
Yeah, I'm welcome. There could be a process, so I can ask you questions.
Would you be ready by the 20th?
Absolutely.
Okay, then that's fine. Sorry, Diane, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Diane Sheen. So, this is important that the, I understand there's plans, because everybody hates fire and I really hate fire because, first of all, I've loaded up my car five times and also my mother lost her lovely little double-wide mobile home in Paradise Fire. And when people get up in the morning, go to work, or just get drug out of bed because the fire's coming, they need to know what to do. And they need to know about a plan. If there's plans, I was just told that there are plans for Weaverville, but there needs to be plans everywhere in this Trinity County because we need to look at this before a fire, not after a fire. And it is, this is only the first of my little reminders on this topic to the board and whoever I get to talk to because there are things that can be done. A reputable person has told us that, a real reputable person has told us that there is water available for such things. And that's how my mother saved her patient friend's house and barn and then saw three houses next, next door, eighth of a mile away, totally consumed. And she's 86 and she's out there with her garden hoses. And so, anyway, it's, it really needs to be looked at further and the, maybe some articles in the Trinity Journal would be good about, from the different agencies that have, have, that have plans to let the folks get informed, to know that, yeah, I was gonna say, they don't need to rush out of their homes, they can use garden hoses to water down everything and maybe they'd have their home. And that's what happened to a lot of people in Paradise. They stayed, I know it was dangerous, but you know what? We need to think about this before it happens and you'll see me up here again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Duncan McIntosh of Junction City. I was just informed that the local recycling center is no longer taking recycling other than CRVs. That presents a hardship for the community members in Trinity County. That means that they no longer take milk jugs, wine bottles, ketchup containers, anything from Costco. And so, as a member of the North Fork Range, we are attempting to implement a no-waste, a zero-waste policy and recycling is the foundation of that. And our option, our alternative, or our only option at this point, is to go to Redding in order to take that recycling. So, that being said, presently, I know that the Trinity Solid Waste takes metal waste, electronics, cardboard, and paper. I would like to request that you board agendas possibly expanding your solid, or your recycling program to also include glass and plastics that are non-CRV. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Lisa Wright with Lewiston. I'm just a little bit confused, so I reviewed the governance manual that the board is following now and in looking at how the agenda is determined, I don't see that it is only allowed through the chair's discretion solely. There's several different items that allow you to put things on the agenda and none of that refers to that requiring approval from one person on the board. So, maybe you can clarify for me because it doesn't seem to fit with your governance meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else public comments?
Is this where I make a comment on the grants or do I wait?
You'll wait, please, so that item will be up.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, moving on to consent agenda. These items include routine on controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by one rule call motion. A member of the board staff or public may request the item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members.
2.7 and 2.8. Excuse me, and, um, actually remove 2.8 and make it 2.12.
2.12, okay. Supervisor Chandler? All right, with that, public please, any items you wish to call?
2.8, please. 2.11.
2.11, with that, anybody else? Okay, hearing done, uh, who are, will take a motion for the last three?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
Supervisor Bro.
Aye.
Supervisor Finley.
Yes.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Chavla.
Aye.
Supervisor Moore.
Yes.
2.7, I think this is your...
Yes, I'm asking refused because this wonderful event may serve.
Okay, 2.7. Find no objections to the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department auxiliary to serve alcoholic beverages at their dinner to be held at Lee Booth Hall, Trinity Center, on February 23rd, 2019. No physical impact. Questions for the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the public comments? All right, seeing none.
Second.
Am I all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. All right, here he comes. Okay, member of the public called 2.8. Prove an agreement with Cole Huber LLP to provide legal representation for the county for Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 19CV001, Trinity Action Association Inc. versus Trinity County, Antall, unknown fiscal. County will be billed 230 per hour for actual hours worked plus any other costs incurred by the firm. Okay. Did you have a question on this item or comment?
Agent Franklin Junction City. And I just wanna say that I think TAA is a radical group whose prime purpose is to eliminate cannabis cultivation from Trinity County, therefore greatly harming our economy. And their suit has put a lot of the license holders and their families and workers in a state of anxiety and even fear in some cases because of the unknown. I'd like to, it's, it's been about five weeks since the suit was filed. I know you heard about it today in closed session, but I think it's due time for the board or the ad hoc committee to make a statement on this issue so the folks who've invested thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in this industry know where the county stands in some kind of public statement so that it's not just a rumor mill going around, the suit doesn't carry any weight, the suit does carry weight. I know you're limited by what your lawyers say you can say, but even if you say, puts some statement out that says, you know, that's fairly vague, at least we know you're talking to us and you're talking to that community of people because it's very important to them. And then I hope also in this that the county will be countersuing TAA to recover full legal costs and any staff costs involved in defending themselves from the suit. And any less than that would be extremely negligent on your part. So, I hope that in hiring Mr. Cole and his firm, that you include that he will be countersuing them to recover your costs and not just the legal cost, but also staff time. And last week I addressed, or last month I addressed the planning commission specifically asking about Commissioner McHugh, who's, when he stood on this side of the podium and made comments before he was on the planning commission, voiced basically the same views as TAA. And I asked Commissioner McHugh to make a statement about his relationship, his involvement or non-involvement with TAA because it would be a bit of a conflict of interest. And maybe Supervisor Bro, you could talk to Mr. McHugh and just let the public know that he's no longer involved with that organization or just some kind of statement along those lines would be a wonderful thing. Because I think this group's kind of delusional and wants, wants to take us back to some form of the good old days that just doesn't exist anymore. Thank you.
Quick question, sir. Are you in favor or opposed to this agenda item? Do you wish it to pass or not pass?
Uh, to pass.
Okay, and I, I hope that how this board votes would present an action as to how we feel about it.
Yes, that would be an action, but I would still like a statement, John.
Okay, thank you.
Kaye Graves from Lewiston. I kind of touched on this before closed session. Since we have new board members, I'd like it to be made clear to the new board members and the public that Derek Cole, one of the people you're planning on hiring to make money off this lawsuit, used to be county council with, code of Cole. And then they spun off people that used to work for him and now they're your county council now, another law firm. And now it's another law firm and it's, I don't know, maybe there's only a few law firms in California and I don't know that you specialize in this, but there seems to be a lot of paying off people, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of our money for lawsuits. And I think you should disclose that, if you haven't, to your new supervisors, the relationship of these people that they've had in the past, not whether they are qualified or not, but just so that's disclosed to them that this relationship exists. I'd also like to know how Derek Cole sat in on closed session when you have yet to approve his agreement. So, that's one of the other problems. Thank you.
Good morning, Detective Brower. I would just like to say that I would support an agreement with this firm. Seek was a very complicated matter, as I'm sure you're aware, and we would be best served by someone who is specialized in such matters. Thank you.
Morning, Chair. Justin Hawkins, April. I was looking over the contract with Derek Cole and on the first page, it talks about checking the client index for a conflict of interest, essentially referring to Trinity Accident, Action Association Incorporated as the adverse party. Presumably, the law firm went ahead and filed, went to the Secretary of State and pulled up the officers of the incorporation. But I have a concern regarding the shareholders too and their relationship with people within the Trinity County government perhaps. So, I feel like there could be conflicts of interest that are not fully covered in just this brief statement of the contract. So, and it is kind of a shadowy group. I mean, I'll be honest, we don't really know who they are, they tend to not want to reveal what's going on. So, it is a concern. I think that there's a, the optics are not very clear and I worry about a conflict of interest that's deeper than just the officers. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe Riley. I'm part of the legal cannabis community here in Trinity County. I just wanna say a couple things about communication in general, about my experience here in Trinity County. A year ago, I would've never been up here talking to you guys, you know, you would've maybe seen me in town, sunglasses on, head down, trying not to, you know, make eye contact with anybody, but that's changing for me. Hearing about this whole TAA thing, I really put some thought into it and I just wanted to speak to them and the community in general about this issue. So, I've never really been part of the community before, before I came here to Weaverville. Always been looking for one, but I came here because I heard this is a place where I could find one that might accept me. And I just, I genuinely believe cannabis has, you know, beneficial things it can do for our country. Excuse me if I get a little bit emotional, I'm never speaking in front of people. You know, I know people who've been to war, who it's helped. I know children who have serious, serious medical issues, who it's helped. I know people who are dying from cancer, who it's helped. So, for people who don't want to hear, I want you to just know that's why I'm behind it. To the people also who don't want to hear, I want to say that I want to hear you, you know. It's important to me where those people are coming from too. They, they have a point, they deserve to be recognized and respected, they're part of this community. And I think if we just try to fight each other all the time, we're not gonna get anywhere, you know? We've gotta listen to them and actually hear where they're coming from, hear what their concerns are, address those concerns, not just say, you're on that side, I'm on this side, let's fight and see who wins. That doesn't create, you know, a community. So, yeah, I, for the first time in my life, I want to be part of a community and if they'll have me, I'll be part of it. If they say no, then I'll leave and that's okay and I won't be angry, but I'll just take my business and my life elsewhere. So, I just wanna come up and say that. Let's raise the level of discourse between us, listen to each other, trying to tell each other and let's really try and be honest about things and not just get what we want. So, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you being here.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Tom Belanco, WC. If you told my 10-year-ago self that I'd be working together with Derek Cole on a case in support of the county licensing program, I would be surprised, to say the least. But here we are. So, I do think this is a good contract. I think it's an unfortunate contract, but it does, as any lawyer know, knows, impact time. So, I'm glad to see it's not put on our own county council. This is the appropriate kind of case that we hire outside council for. I know there is money available to fund this legal defense. It is unfortunate that that money, which is available, is being used to fund this legal defense and not implement the program and do all the other things that that money is designed for. Alas, here we are. I do think it's a reasonable contract, it's a reasonable fee for an expert in the field on this, so happy to be part of it. I think this is a, a good hire, so I encourage you to support. Thank you.
Counsel, do you wish to elaborate on anything here?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions that came up on this item for counsel?
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2.8. Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two dot eight as presented, which is approve an agreement with Cota, well, I'm sorry, excuse me, with Cole Huber LLP. Sorry Derek, I'm still in those days.
I have a second.
I was going to say it might die for.
No, it's laughing, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and we will have more information soon, Drew, and as you can see, we are taking this very seriously and there'll be more information for our license holders shortly.
Thank you.
And for this matter, I would like to, I think it will be helpful for our license holders to receive. Can you roll call the Board, please?
Subrider Rose?
Aye.
Subrider Finley?
Yes.
Subrider Brown?
Aye.
Subrider Chadwick?
Aye.
Subrider Morris?
Yes. Two point one one, receive a report on claims against the county closed between April thirtieth, twenty eighteen and through January thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents from the solid waste department and twenty-seven thousand and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents from the Department of Transportation. Good morning, Shelley. Good morning. And Everett, you had a question on this?
Number of Harvey, Weaverville. Maybe I'm just sleepy, but I'm trying to understand what these charges are for. I'm not quite understanding. One of them's twenty-six thousand, which seems fairly high. Just an explanation.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
So the county receives liability toward claims periodically through the year as well as workers' compensation claims that we may have settlements on. And this is my format of reporting out what those settlements are. You know, and I defined within on the attachment what the claim was, basically, so if there's any in particular you had a question about, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Questions from the Board for Shelley? Any more questions? I'm hearing them. Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, item two point one two, accept a donation of a twenty-two volt model seven zero four three, a generic generator which includes the purchase and installation of the generator in the Trinity Animal Shelter Auxiliary, known as TASSA, and accept donations of the use of a propane tank from Capora. Propane for the use by the Trinity County Animal Shelter and direct that generator be added to the county's listing of fixed assets. There is a minimal fiscal impact anticipated. The Trinity County Animal Shelter budget will be able to absorb any costs resulting from maintenance or repairs to the generator and the cost of the propane needed to operate the generator during the power outage. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Mary Treese, the Business Manager of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office.
I pulled this and I apologize for taking some time for the Board on this item, but I just wanted to bring this out to note how wonderful this is and what the Animal Shelter Auxiliary does is fantastic. And I just wanted to say, I felt it was appropriate to give a big thank you for you guys to step up and do this. And I have no questions, I just wanted to make a political statement.
Thank you. I was just going to say something prior to saying that because I thought you had a question. So, again, TASSA, thank you for all your hard work. Keep it going. Thank you again. Any other questions, comments for the Board? Public? No? All right, we'll have to still go through the proper procedure to hear.
I'll move to accept two point one two.
All second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one's going to oppose. Not dogs and animals. All right, so moved. Thank you everyone for your work. All right, I think those were the items that were approved, or pulled, I should say. All right, moving into reports and announcements. Reports from department heads.
I just wanted to provide you an update on our Veteran Service Officer vacancy that we have in the office. Shasta County has graciously acknowledged helping us. So, I have posted on the Veteran Service website as well as their door and their voice mail machine their contact information if any of our veterans need help until we have a replacement in place. And we are looking as quickly as we can to get somebody in there. Can't provide any TA yet.
Is there somebody to turn the volume up? Thank you for the update and the stopgap solution. Any questions, Board members? All right, any other department heads? Okay, Madam Chair. I don't think she's running the other state. Yeah, apparently she can stand up. Do you want to do that? She's in right.
Please come on.
Excuse me, is there some way to turn the volume up on the important things you folks have to say? Because I realize that I'm sort of asking for a combination of disability because I'm half-dead, but I'd really like to hear your important words and I'm having trouble with that.
Okay, we will do, keep, turn it up as much as we can. Good morning, not to put you on the hot seat. C A O, would you like to do a formal introduction?
This is Connie, our Behavioral Health Director. She's, can you hear me?
I can't hear a thing.
Yeah, Connie. This is Connie. She's our new Behavioral Health Director. She's been on almost a month now, doing a wonderful job. Met with most, I think her entire staff and just moving forward now, brought a bunch of great ideas to me. So, let her introduce herself and give a little background where she's from and how things are going.
Good morning, thank you for welcoming me. I'm Connie Sessner Smith. I have worked in several counties in behavioral health in the course of my career. I started in Lasting County twenty years ago, nineteen years ago, and have kind of moved around the state and I come to you most recently from Yolo County Health and Human Services and I'm thrilled to be back in Trinity.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Welcome. Thank you for your connections that you have in the behavioral health field, I mean, within the state, Connie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. Thank you Supervisor Chadwick. Okay, any other department heads before I move into the C A O report? Anything, no, anything from C A O?
That's the jury department.
Okay, members of the Board Supervisors, Supervisor Chadwick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the sixteenth of January, I was, got to attend as alternate with Partner Supervisor Brown, R C R C in Sacramento. There is quite a bit of things happening. And on the twenty-third, thank you Tina, was CAP down in Redding. Again, there is a lot of stuff in flux with CAP and it coincided with the point in time count. Once a year, the federal government requires that every county throughout the United States counts their homeless. And this point of time count was conducted throughout our county by numerous volunteers. I want to say a special thank you to Katie and her crew for heading this up. And on the twenty-fourth, the Trinity Fire Safe Council, and for all those who are not aware of it, it is a good place to come and have public conversation with people that are very interested in putting together plans throughout our county. Diane Sheen, you'll, I think, know that your son attends sometimes and he's a positive force in there. So, it's really up to the communities, individual communities, to come together first and come up with a plan. Also, last night was a Fire Chiefs Association, all chiefs meeting that's held once a month in Weaverville and there was discussion there and a presentation by a gentleman who is looking forward to doing manufacturing and distribution out of the Hayport District Five site. That concludes my report.
Supervisor Gross?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I was in Sacramento. I met with Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire on just general topics, but one that's been important to Trinity County that we now may have a chance is with our new governor was on the, was the S B seven forty-seven and that's additional money for our airports. So, Senator McGuire and Woods are going to try to get that going again and see if we can get those monies out of this state cow trans. They both said to say hello to Trinity County. Secondly, there was, I do want to, this is a little out of bounds of what we normally do here, but to answer Drew's question on my planning commissioner, membership in the TAA, he has not been an active member for, or a member for over two years and has not donated any money into this process. And his time there is when TAA was working with the growth community, trying to work out a plan for everyone.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes, I'm out of county travelable. Last Thursday, I was in Chico for Nortech. And one other thing I'd like to do is request a team building seminar. I believe it's coming forward for this Board. I believe C A O might have something to do with this or be able to put this together for us by the twentieth, our next meeting, if you wouldn't mind doing that, if it's the Board's pleasure.
I second that.
It's the Board's pleasure.
Does he have a plan already? Oh, okay. So you're expecting a plan to come forward, not for the actual event?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That would be great if you wanted.
Just want to make sure we have some clarity.
We could spend all afternoon.
I know, it's going to, I think the twentieth will be a very big day, so roughly speaking. Supervisor Brown, any add?
Yes, let's see, going back to January sixteenth, I was at the R C R C Committee Meeting in Sacramento with Supervisor Chadwick. A lot of things discussed were the potential budget updates, changes that the governor's put into effect. One of the biggest things is diverting a lot more money towards the fire prevention, forestry stuff. So, they're working with Cowfire to develop some new tactics that are going to be more aggressive and hopefully benefit the rural communities. And they also, let's see, I think a letter was sent to the Trump Administration requesting that they review their policy on their forest management and if they can up the, up the cutting this year. So, we have not heard back, I believe. On the seventeenth, I was in Santa Cruz at a Leadership CSAC course about the power of storytelling. So, if anyone ever wants to come to the office in the courthouse, I can tell stories that will bring change.
Stories that are true.
Yes. On the twenty-third, I attended the CAP Committee Meeting in Sacramento and Bobby already spoke about that. On the twenty-fourth of January, I was at another leadership course in Sacramento. And on the twenty-fifth, I was able to meet an old high school acquaintance who works for the governor as his Chief Deputy of Executive Affairs. And it seems like a really nice avenue to get county issues to a better listening ear. And that was pretty exciting. And on the thirtieth, I was in Eureka and I met John Driscoll, one of Jared Huffman's representatives, and discussed the Wilderness Act. And I think that's really exciting and encourage anybody that wants to come talk to me and share concerns or excitement about this proposal, I would be so enthusiastic to do that. So, please reach out to me. I have gotten no phone calls in the last week from any constituents, no emails, very little. So, I encourage people to reach out and look forward to it.
Thank you. Supervisor Gross, I think you had another.
Yeah, Jeremy didn't mention that we had gotten a tour of the dam and the power system. And I wanted to make my pitch for Darrow and the Historical Group to grab one of their old runners and put that in your museum. It doesn't weigh more than forty thousand pounds. So.
Thanks a lot.
And I do encourage the other supervisors to take a tour. The dams, one of the generators was torn down, so you actually get to go inside and see the rework of the generator and the runners.
It was very impressive. We've got a really cool piece of machinery running Trinity County's power grid. And, you know, when you look at the water getting diverted, just think of that awesome electricity rate.
And Supervisor Gross, I think we will take tours. We didn't want to violate any of our act with more than two of us.
It's definitely worth the time right now.
Especially with its impact on the fire last time. Okay, no out of town travel for me, just some constituent issues, last couple of weeks, trying to get solved, so. All right.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I would like to just bring before the Board that at the last couple of meetings, that there's been talk of disbanding. I would request that we would have that discussion and vote on each individual ad hoc at some point.
Yeah, so, we're going to go through this and as I had mentioned, then we can further discuss. So, California state legislation, some news, bills are being developed, nothing. Of course, the big one is taxation, they're reducing taxation because they're seeing the complete, I don't want to say failure, but the numbers just aren't working out to what they expected. So, they are reducing taxation and I think, if I recall correctly, removing cultivation tax at the moment. There are some other stuff that I'm happy to report out on as co-chair of the Cannabis Working Group for CSAC. We will be certainly giving more in-depth briefing on some of these bills that are about to be introduced. John, did you?
I just, I've been getting notifications, one eighty-five McGuire introduced regarding taxation regulated control, especially for marketing.
Oh, right, okay.
You know, talk to Senator McGuire.
So, and then I'll go back to some thoughts on this after we roll down this list here. Permanent Commercial Cannabis Ordinance, Supervisor Gross. What's your name?
I thought you were taking the lead on that.
Oh, I can do that.
I'm changing.
I will, I'm going to just do a briefing on each of them. As you can see on today's agenda, we have an item, a couple of items, the amendments to cultivation and also the event festival license as it pertains to the Trinity County Fairgrounds. There will be some other information coming forward shortly on our ad hoc. New jail detention facility.
It's going to inform us as to where we are. The plans are on the internet, available to the public and Shelley and I were working on the very last of the specifications that go out tomorrow. We have coordinated everything with the architect and we've selected a March twentieth bid opening date, along with a pre-meeting as a little bit later this month. An official notice will be going out to the bidders next weekend.
But plans are available.
Yeah, we put the plans out early because it's pretty extensive and so the contractors have been able to get access to that and start working up their quantities and things that require to put together a bid for building.
Okay, any questions from the Board? Okay, any questions from the board? So Rick, it sounds like we are now in launch mode, if you will say.
We're gonna leave in the past.
Okay.
They're tomorrow.
So one thing I'd like to do, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I will eliminate the new jail facility ad hoc. A lot of the board members' work was a couple months ago, even longer than that, and it sounds like you are now in liftoff mode.
Current.
Okay. So you'll just have to keep us updated, obviously through the CAO and through your board reports on jail progress.
Yes.
All right, I know it's been a ton of work, so thank you for moving this along. Okay, Wilderness Oversight Committee.
Okay, so Jeremy and I haven't had a chance since he, to meet since we went over, or since he went over and met. But we had a little hiccup in our timing there, but I think we're back on track. And so Jeremy, I apologize for not getting to you on my plan, and hopefully you're on board with this. But originally, the board asked as a whole to go down and in Southern Trinity someplace and at least once and take testimony from constituents. So I'm here asking if the board still wants that to take place. My thought was we do this in Hayfork at a bigger facility, and I don't want this meeting to be just, you know, environmentalists suck, you know, lagers suck. I mean, I want this to be, have people come and say, what we really like about this bill is this, we don't like this, specific issues that we as a board can discuss and make a policy statement to, to the Congress. So that's what I would like to see happen, but it's up to the board if you want to meet as a whole. And if Hayfork's not okay, then other suggestions where this could meet. So that's my question.
Board members?
Most of my comments come from Hayfork, so Hayfork would be fun.
Supervisor, anything to add?
No, I support that. I think that'd be great if we can schedule something. I don't know the best mechanism of putting notice out so people can be aware, but if we need a journal or something like that, I think that'd be great. I'd love to be there.
Just request an evening or a weekend meeting.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes. And I just would, I'm fine with all of that. I would further like to add that perhaps we have Congressman Huffman's representative, John Driscoll, either prior to that meeting to give the board an update, because as we know, the bill expired in end of December, they're gonna look at re-inducing the bill. So I kind of would like a little bit of an update from their office before we go into that Hayfork meeting. He certainly, I sure would want to join us in Hayfork if his schedule allows, but at least have John give us an update formally as a board.
I'll reach out to him and see if there's a date.
If that's the board's pleasure? Yes. And then move, just so we have an update on where they're at?
Sure.
Okay. Any other? You guys will then work on a Hayfork meeting?
Yeah, Keith and I will discuss it and move.
And bring it back to the board?
Yeah.
And I do have a meeting in the end of February with Congressman Huffman, but it doesn't look like timing that we'll be able to have any statements formally from the board. So I have other business with him there, so we just won't make a board statement.
Okay. All right, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so back to the California state cannabis legislation. John, I was hoping there, I was wishful thinking that maybe legislation would kind of reduce, but there's still a lot of fixes that need to happen. So we can handle this ad hoc any way you and I would like. We can continue reporting out on legislation. I can just continue about as it comes up. How would you like to?
Why didn't you include it with the permanent cannabis, permanent commercial cannabis ordinance?
I can do that too, as things come up.
Yeah, and then you and Keith can take a look at it.
Okay. Certainly if you see something, you'll bring it to our attention and the board's attention.
State's gonna do what they want to do.
Right, I just want to make sure the board is up to date on what is brewing down in Sacramento and our license holder. So I'm gonna roll that in, if that makes sense to you, if you're agreeable.
I'm agreeable.
Okay. The permanent commercial cannabis ordinance, we, as we have mentioned here and there, we are three quarters of the way done, if not more. My big chunk of work in the near future is the amendment cultivation, today's item. We will, we have SEQA going on, so there's not a lot we're gonna be, there's a couple amendments on some of the licenses we need to look at before then, but we will take that back to the ad hoc. I would like to see if Supervisor Chadwick would like to, I would, we would spin this piece of work off being the retail ordinance, and I'd like to see if you would like to be part of a retail ad hoc.
Say yes.
Say yes.
I was actually hoping, Madam Chair, that the permanent commercial cannabis ad hoc would be dismantled and that the full board would be able to participate in all future things and direct it toward staff. That was, I was hoping to have that conversation. Well, I don't know how lengthy we want to get into this part.
I, that sounds like something that should be agendized, since it would require notice and probably a vote, and I would be in favor of supervisor, I would support, I will support Supervisor Chadwick in that item. I would like to see all of these items given to the CAO, given to county council, given to staff, and let them work on it instead of having two supervisors. But if two supervisors do want to continue it, I will support that also, since it is there, it's what they look like to the outside world, and it looks pretty weird.
Supervisor, is there a motion?
I won't be making a motion on this, I'll just be asking.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
To support whatever you wish to do.
I understand, and Supervisor Groves, you can certainly jump in anytime. As far as the ad hoc, we lack capacity in many departments. This is a whole new program that had to get developed. We have another layers of complication with finishing some of these items, although we're very close. We hope to be, be done by August. We have to wait to have SEQA materializes. Then of course you have the layer of a lawsuit. So there's some tricky waters we're navigating. I would hate to see, it will line up like the rest of the jets on the tarmac of issues in front of planning that need to happen. So if you guys want to delay things, we can. Supervisor Groves, I mean, I was hoping with spinning retail off to you, that would also, you know, I know retail's been out there, and it's not been a delay on our part, it's just constant different things thrown at us in order to further some of the development. Supervisor Groves, would you like to?
Well, my, my philosophy hasn't changed. The, the taking this and giving it to staff will delay this program drastically because staff is overworked on what they're trying to accomplish today, just to keep up. If we do decide to give it to staff, then we're gonna have to give really concise direction to staff. Are they gonna issue licenses, or are they gonna work on a retail ordinance? Or are they gonna do case, or are they gonna do a general plan? So we don't have the depth to do this all. The retail is, you know, these things have always gone slower than they should have, or, you know, it's just the way government works, unfortunately. We do have a plan to move forward on retail, but that has been delayed because of wanting to know what the board as a whole wants to do. So of course, this is up to the board as a whole to decide, you know, do we abandon as we're almost ready to cross the finish line, or do we keep the course?
Yeah, okay, instead of abandoning and adding more layers of confusion, as has been suggested, we're keeping the layers lower. How about having staff come back with possibly a consultant, an RFQ to a consultant to look specifically at retail and have them work on that and see how that works, and that frees the two of you up to continue with what you're doing.
We can do that too. That will take a little longer, because we'll have to, you know, the paperwork dance that has to happen. We can do that as well.
If staff wants that responsibility, they might.
When I have a note of retail, I was just hoping that we would be able to function as a full board overseeing.
And staff, staff would go out, get the information presented to the full board, and we would make the decisions at that point and give direction to staff.
You're missing how the process works, that staff would go to planning commission.
Right.
And then planning commission would come.
Staff, staff would get a consultant.
Consultant would work with staff, and they would go to the planning commission, and the planning commission would send it up.
Nothing changes with the process, whether we're involved or not. By the time you, although I appreciate that idea, and we can look at it, it does delay more things in terms of getting retail bats out.
For the sake of not delaying, you said I was an ad hoc, usually an ad hoc isn't a single person, so who else did you have in mind?
Well, thank you, I didn't get the chance to finish my thought at the time, so I certainly was looking at you, and I'm hoping to entertain, he's like, what? Supervisor Brown or Supervisor Finley, whoever would like to?
Brown.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be better.
Brown. So again, just remember, there's things that are lining up already in the queue, so you're gonna have to certainly work with county council and CAO, and staff will help you as well, but you're gonna be carrying some of the load on it, obviously, like any two board members do in ad hoc.
Looking forward to working with you, Supervisor.
So as long, as long as you, either of you, I think this is the reason I'm looking at the retail portion of this, is that you don't either feel like there's a conflict on this issue? That's what, okay. Council, long, any other comments on conflict that we have to be worried about?
Well, that would be an individual decision the board members have to make.
Right.
As long as they feel comfortable moving forward, there are implications to move forward.
Okay. Supervisor Groves?
So if, after the process and this goes through and conflict is found, what happens?
The ordinance would be void, and you would have to come back to the board with only members who are not conflicted to make a determination if they wanted to reenact it or if they wanted to modify it.
Would you have to go back to the planning commission?
Uh, yes.
So the process would start?
The process would start.
That the work would have been done.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Just want to be clear, so people know what I think we're talking about. Because I am a licensed cultivator, is the issue of conflict, if I'm involved with that. And according to FPPC laws, because 25% of the county is affected one way or another because of it, it should not disable my ability to vote on this matter or be involved. If anyone wants to talk to me about that also after the meeting, feel free.
And Supervisor Brown, as I had mentioned before, I know you, you are asking for.
Yes, I will have a letter within the next week stating that. There are also similar cases that do state that, that are already have been found upheld. So if anyone wants more clarity, please feel free to contact me.
And I have no idea how they'll respond back to you, but if they respond negatively, you'll have to move yourself off.
I will disclose fully.
Okay. Okay. And so. Does that work? Yes, Madam Chair, okay. Supervisor, you're off the hook. You have no ad hoc work. And then, and then I think I did mention that we're getting rid of the jail detention facility. Wilderness Oversight Committee, I just, since that legislation did expire, I wouldn't mind renaming it to Federal Public Land Legislation slash reintroduction, because I just don't have a date of when reintroduction is coming forth. So other than that, any other questions from board members?
If that makes, just to make sure I have my understanding, can you clarify it? The jail, the jail, new jail detention facility will go away. A new ad hoc will be formed, Supervisor Chadwick and Supervisor Brown, that will be called.
Retail.
Retail Cannabis Ordinance. And that in terms of number two, which is the permanent commercial cannabis ordinance, is that going to be modified or changed in some way?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna rename it, since the majority of the work is done, and we're gonna call it, I had it right at the tip of my tongue, Commercial Cannabis Ordinance Amendments.
So it's being reformed in a new capacity as a commercial cannabis ordinance then?
Yes, and do you see any issue where I'm gonna roll in the state cannabis legislation updates into that?
No, because they'll affect amendments.
Right, so, okay.
Amendments will have to go, that will be fine, but I just want to make sure it's clear it's a new, new ad hoc with a new purpose. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me, I was, wanted to rename that as well. All right, Supervisor?
Quick question, how does this comply with our governance manual?
In what way? I believe it does comply with it, but do you have any questions or concerns?
Does this need to be voted on?
It is the chair's authority to make a sign to ad hoc committees. If the rest of the board does not agree with it, you can put it on calendar to vote to override.
Okay.
Which is what was being discussed earlier.
Okay, any other questions? Supervisor Groves? Moving on to county matters. Discuss or take action to reschedule or cancel the March 5th, 2019 board meeting, no fiscal impact. This has come to my attention that both Supervisor Chadwick and myself will be out of town, so we wanted to bring this forward to the board and ask what your pleasure would be if we, we have a couple options, completely cancel it or just move it a week to the 12th of March. Thank you. You read my mind.
But we'll still have three board members?
You won't have a chair or vice chair, that's the problem.
The deputy can, deputy clerk, or clerk of the board can appoint.
And I.
If we wish to move forward with business or not.
Right, well, we would just move it to March 12.
It has to fall on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, we could do Wednesday.
We could do Wednesday.
We could do it. When are you coming back into town?
Wednesday night.
So why don't we have a 7th or 8th, instead of putting it just a week before the next meeting?
We can do that.
I'll be flying home on the 7th.
You'll be flying home on the 7th?
8th works for me, I have it for the 4th on Monday.
Does it still be gone, will still be?
And I want to make it clear, if you do move it to the 7th, you'll be moving it as a special meeting, which is fine. The only thing, there's a couple things you can't do in special meetings related to the budget, but we will make sure nothing goes on the agenda, and I don't believe anything would be going on the agenda that would be precluded from being a special meeting.
So I'm hearing the date of March, Friday, March 8th. Does that work for all of you?
Yes.
It'll be a Friday.
Yes, it works.
It works, thank you. Okay, so in order to have, avoid compaction of meetings, we will schedule the March 5th meeting to March 8th. Would you like a? Would you like a?
Sure.
All right. Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to schedule our regular schedule to a special, moving it from the 5th to the 8th. Yes.
I'll second that if you give me a time.
Normal time, 9:00 AM?
Okay. Thank you.
With no budgets. All right. I have a motion to second for Friday, March 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone pose?
No.
No? You can't make it?
No, I can make it.
You just want to say no? Okay. So we will move March 5th to March 8th, Friday. Thank you for your cooperation. Moving on to item 5.2. This is one of the more simpler licenses that we were able to create out of ad hoc. As all of you know, there's a festival event license that's available through the state. Thank you. I thought I did. Introduce and waive the reading of ordinance creating Treaty County Code Section 5.2.5 regarding cannabis events, unknown fiscal impact. So I'm gonna just do a quick introduction highlight, turn it over to Supervisor Brown to go into more detail and then, of course, Director Tippett. So this license is really focused on the Treaty County Fair property where an event could happen. We have certainly received information from the fair board. They are interested in having this license. And so we developed this so an event of cannabis-related event can be held there. With that, I would like to turn it over to you for details.
So this is a pretty simple license. The highlights are you have to have the state license to apply for the county license. You have to be a, I'm using the term here, coordinator, event organizer license, and then you have to have a license to have the event. So the thought on this is basically the fairgrounds is already set up. They had interest in doing this. We had no more requirements than the state has. I did find a type on here we can talk about in a bit. Originally, the state only allowed events in fairgrounds. The state since and later has changed that, so the question may come up, why only at the fairgrounds? And the reason basically came down is that the county's festival ordinance was written probably the day after Woodstock. For younger ones, that was kind of a big deal.
What's Woodstock?
And so the county was very afraid of a bunch of hippies coming in here and trashing the place, so they wrote a very, it's kind of fun to read, but it's a time period piece. So the, to go without into other places, we would have to update the festival ordinance. And of course, the cannabis group doesn't have the authority to start writing ordinances. So we left it, keep it at the fairgrounds. This makes it a non.
Land use?
Non-land use, thank you, event because the land use has already been scheduled for the fairgrounds. And everything that required by the state is already in present. And then the fairgrounds may have their own rules and they have to, of course, follow the state rules, but it will be up to them to set what conditions that they want. So that's kind of a quick rundown on it. Any questions?
Thank you. Rick, did you have something you'd like to add?
Just that we.
From the planning viewpoint?
Just that we brought over the general conditions from the outdoor festival concerning safety for food, health, communications, security.
Supervisor Brown, I saw the light, thank you.
Oh, that was from my attendance.
Okay, sorry. Any other questions from the board? No? Members of the public, questions, comments? Please step to the podium.
I was just curious, when you said we had to have a state license, does that mean temporary or permanent? Because currently, there's very, very, very few permanent state licenses available. The industry is moving fast. Corporations are a year. They are moving a lot faster than we are and they have local governments on our side. So I'm just curious what you guys' differentiation is between the temporary and permanent state license? Thank you.
For the event license, it's a, it's a permanent license to be an events coordinator license. So that's just a permanent license for the state. That doesn't, other licensing, the event, the people at the other licensing, I believe the temporary licensing is adequate. It is from our side.
And I think ours is, I can't quite find it, but there's a time period as when. Do you have that off the top of your head, Rick? I don't.
No, it's just, it's really meant to be event-oriented. The fairgrounds, it's kind of first stops the fairgrounds and they vote to post the event and then you go from there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Evan Barrow from Hayfork. I think the event would be a lot more fun if there was alcohol and tobacco there. And I don't know why that was line item to say no alcohol, no tobacco. I went to the Emerald Cup. They had a real nice beer wine garden with food and people could smoke cigarettes in there. Had a lot of fun. So that's all.
That's state law.
Was it Emerald Cup?
And I drove 90 miles an hour down the freeway. So.
Oh, yeah.
It is state law in the event. I don't know if they're holding that, is the Emerald Cup as an event license or not?
John Brower from Junction City. And the way the legislation reads, you can't enter through a cannabis retail, licensed cannabis retailer to get to a licensed alcohol or tobacco retailer, or vice versa. So they could have separate entrances and that's how the Emerald Cup did their beer garden. And I think this is a wonderful move. It's long overdue. The fairgrounds and the fair board are fully on board with this. The fair board's done a lot of hard work on this. I think the supervisors could also take another look at that restrictive festival ordinance at some point in the future and maybe revamp that and hopefully at some point open up the opportunity for cannabis events to organizations like The Grange and perhaps even private properties. I think where, when the retail ordinance shakes out, we're likely to have kind of a wine tasting event-type retail scenario on some farms. And some of them might be well-suited for small events. So I think this is a great first step, but I also encourage the ad hoc staff to continue work to open this up to more opportunities. Thank you.
I will say we took this path as the most lowest hanging fruit to have something available. The other avenues that you mentioned certainly take a much longer process and land use requirement, which would require going through the Planning Commission and those public hearings. So it is not off our radar. We just wanted to get something out there that really would fit and the request of the fair board, so.
Ready for a motion?
Yep. Does Edward Swakely? Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Edward Harvey Weaverville again. Please bear with the first part of this. Some time ago, I remember coming up here and wondering about how could I get my six plants, not commercial grow, seeds or clones? There's no retail outfit here, so I've gotta go someplace to get it, there's nurseries and whatnot. So anyway, here you want to have an event with tons of retail sales going on and yet you don't have a retail license. So I'm sort of puzzled as to how this is going to be handled. Will you do it in time that I can go get my six plants?
Say that one more time.
Shh.
Good job.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Balaico, Douglas City. Thank you. I think this is a great ordinance. It's got a lot of attributes I like about it. It's short, it's to the point, and here it is and we're acting on it. I think it's excellent, something we can certainly use. I guess it's just the position Tuesday. The only question I do have on it, I'll let you in on a little secret. The money in cannabis is in retail. So I was surprised to see a $25 fee when cultivators are going to pay $6,000. Even your smallest cultivators are paying thousands of dollars. Four days of retail sales will bring in more. I know that's not how we calculate fees, but it seems like, you know, renewing a license on a cottage grow that hasn't changed anything, costs less county time, bad, a bunch of people buying weed at the fairgrounds. I'm in favor of both, but I was just curious about the fee. So I'm not sure I want to say it. Could we bring that one up? But if that's one of our standards, could we bring the licensing fees down or just cheer us back? Thank you.
Will you make it out of the parking lot if we raise the fees?
Justin Hawkins, Hayfork. I guess I just want to follow up on that idea right there. In fact, we've never had a fee study again. We just repeat contract for more litigation and sequel. So I'd love to see a fee study to support this.
If I remember right, didn't we approve a bit center down river? So would that land use be acceptable to this ordinance?
This is just the fairgrounds at the moment.
At the moment, because we have a legal a bit center down river as well.
Okay, and then, anything else?
Last one. I'm learning how it's done. Joe Radley, Weaverville. I just want to back up what he said about the fees. I've run businesses all across this country and.
Yeah, you've gone twice.
Oh, my apologies.
So, thank you. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Bring him back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.2, introducing the way of reading of an ordinance creating Treaty County Code Section 5.2 regarding cannabis event as presented.
I'll second.
I have discussion. Counsel? I think I'd like you to weigh in on G, A. So under G, in order to obtain a license, the applicant must submit following to the county. And A is a cannabis event organizer's license issued by the county. And then, or excuse me, by the state. I think I've answered my own questions. I read it again. But H also says state approval of cannabis event shall be received by the county or later in seven days. So A is just the general organizer license and then within seven days of the event, you have to show the state approval?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And now I have one other comment. The fees on this are based on what the, it's gonna cost the county estimated without a fee study, but we're not limiting, limiting what the fairgrounds fees will be to this. We're not stepping on the fairgrounds and it's their event, it's their war in terror and it's all their things that they're gonna be doing. So I assume that they will have significant fees. Also, under the retail side, the county does make its 1% off of all sales done that goes into our, into our sales tax, so.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Did you have a correction spelling or something?
No, I.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Finley, I think you said you might have a motion.
They did already.
Oh, duh. My apologies, you did. Okay, so.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item 5.3. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018, 2019 in the Elections Department, Department 1650, increasing inter-fund expenses by $75,586 and approve the budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018, 19 in the contingency general fund department, Department 9901, decreasing appropriations for contingency, $75,586. Increase in general fund appropriations of $75,586. Good morning.
Good morning. Shannon White, County Quick Record Prosecutor.
Giving one second. Supervisor is going to refuse himself.
Shannon White, County Quick Record Prosecutor. So as I posted in my staff report is that, you know, I originally budgeted $50,000 for litigation costs and I've gone well over that already for this fiscal year. So I, so I am here to request additional monies and I have about $50,000 that's over what's already been incurred to hopefully make it through the end of this fiscal year. The expenses, that $50,000, what I'm asking for was prior to the December billing, which was about five grand. And January billing is going to be quite higher than that because I have three days in trial. So I'm hoping that that $50,000 that's above and beyond what's already been incurred is gonna cover it, but I do want to let the board know that if it's not, I could be coming back and ask people more.
Questions from public comments?
Hey, Grace from Lewiston. As someone who's attended most of these hearings, including the ones when the judge appeared by phone, I'm curious why we're paying another Prentice Long and Emerson employee to be there in court when even Judge Guinecki has asked why he's there repeatedly? He's there all the time. He speaks most of the time. There's another lawyer from, I think it's Churchill White, representing Super, Mr. Finley, who rarely says anything. So why are we paying two law firms for this case? And I would like to know why we're spending all this money for somebody who doesn't necessarily have to be there. And if he does, then why are we paying for another law firm? Seems like we're doubling down on the cost of this. Thank you.
Counsel's writing.
I think that question's been asked and answered several occasions.
Thank you. Any other questions on Shannon? No? All right, coming back to the board. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to set 5.3 as written. Second.
I have discussion? Yep. I actually don't remember the answer to that question and I take decent notes and I think it has been asked before, but it hasn't been answered. I'll throw this back at you or CAO.
I believe the question is why are there two attorneys on this case? Because there's real party interest, which is the county through your court, prosecutor, court or election official. And then there was an individual name that potentially could have a conflict with the county and was afforded the government code separate counsel and represented his interests as well.
All right.
So essentially, two defendants? So essentially, two defendants?
You'll have, sorry, I'll have to ask the question. Public, the question is off at the moment. Okay, any other comments? With a little question that got snuck in, okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes. Okay. Any other questions, board members? All right, so we have a motion second on the table. This is just our normal item, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, see, no opposition, it moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could somebody, Mr. Finley? Sorry, old habits die hard.
All right. Kidding, just nervous and chose to yell. Okay, item 5.4. Select proposals for funding pursuant to Title III Secure Rule Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000, up to $94,422 in Title III funds. So do you want to take it from here?
Yeah. Sorry, quick overview of the Title III funds.
Okay, so I'm Pat Frost. And I guess I'm here today probably wearing the hat of the last chairman of the Title II Resource Advisory Committee under the Secure Rule Schools Act. And the CAO have suggested that some of you are new to Secure Rule Schools and maybe a nickel tour of what Title III is would maybe help set the stage for your action. So Secure Rule Schools, which was passed back in around, I guess, November of 2000, I think it was, has been in play ever since then. It has three titles or chapters. Title I, which you all know primarily as the roads and schools money that comes from the federal government in lieu of us getting taxes for all that type of land. Used to be tied to timber harvest stumpage. It no longer is, hasn't been since 2000. Title II, which is the Resource Advisory Committee, which is a federal advisory committee set up by the Forest Service with members appointed by the Secretary of Agriculture. A little aside there, you know, the current law was passed in the omnibus bill in the spring of last year. The Forest Service has yet to reestablish those committees. And they're in Trinity County, roughly $400,000 for each of two years. It's not getting spent on the ground because those committees are not functioning at this time. And I would encourage, when you're meeting with our congressman, to remind him of that problem. Title III is money that comes to you, the board supervisors, with certain categories of allowable projects. So writing or amending community wildfire protection plans, doing demonstration projects that support fire-safe and fire-wise communities. And a third category, which is to reimburse local emergency responders for damages or losses to equipment that might have occurred or would have occurred while they were responding to an incident on federal land. So what you have before you today is, you know, I think some proposals that were submitted. Want to thank Tina for all the effort that she's put into. You know, the advertise, it's a fairly complex process that was established in the law, you know, that required an advertisement kind of soliciting proposals, a board meeting which occurred last fall in which you decided which proposals met the criteria, the kinds of projects that you could approve. A subsequent advertisement that said that you would then make decisions on what to fund 45 days after the advertisement. And that's where you're at today. So you've got this, and this is the first of two years' worth of funding that you have available under the omnibus bill that was passed last, I think it was March. My nickel tour. Probably a $25 nickel tour now, but I miss inflation.
My favorite part was that you acknowledged all the hard work that Tina did, so I appreciate that.
Wow.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions of our resident guru of Title III, is my new name for Patton?
Pat, could you send me a summary of that Title II committee so I can...
I will.
You sent the whole board?
Soon as I get home.
Send it to Tina, then she can send it to the whole board so we can have our different conversations. Okay, any other questions, technical questions that Pat could answer? No, okay. All right, so before us, we have a proposal.
I can...
Yep, please do.
What we have available this year for Title III funds was $94,422, which we had $113,000 in proposed projects. We received four projects altogether. One from Weaverville Fire, one from Trinity County Resource Conservation District, one from the watershed research, and one from Downriver. Weaverville Fire asked for $33,000. Trinity County Resource and watershed was asked for $30,000, and then Downriver was requesting $20,000. Again, these are just recommendations. The Trinity Fire, I'm sorry, Trinity County Resource, Weaverville Fire, and watershed have all received funding in the past and have done a good job. We have the new one, which is Downriver. This kind of comes from my past life and administering grants, where we always encourage new participants and new applicants so we can expand our sphere of influence. But we also don't want to do it at the cost of those that have been performing the duties over the years and doing it very well. So what we're, what staff's recommending to the board is $29,502 Weaverville Fire, $28,500 to Trinity County Resource, $28,500 to watershed, and then $7,922 to Downriver Fire Company.
Any questions? Can I make you do one? Okay. Supervisor Burrow. Members of the public, any questions, comments? You'd have to step to the podium, please.
I think that I can be heard well enough, even though I'm half-deaf. I think I speak loud enough to be heard. Honorable members of the board and so many positive comments...
You'll have to speak to the board.
Okay. Interested in fire safety. So I'm here to address the issue of the Weaverville Fire Department funding. There seems to be very little oversight of how those funds are actually used and if they're used in accordance with the grant requirements by the federal government under their regulations and their own proposal. They contend that their primary purpose is to provide funding for the 100-foot clearance for senior, handicapped, and low-income individuals. I would like you to respectfully consider placing a condition on the receipt of those funds that they comply exactly with that purpose as a priority on the use of that funding before they divert it to any lesser qualified individuals who are not all three senior, disabled, and low-income. Before they divert to programs for clearing wealthy doctor's offices, parks, you know, trailer parks and the like, because it is the purpose of the individuals that fit the categories of senior, disabled, and low-income that desperately need the priority on this funding. In the past, that has not happened. And there are many of us who've stood up and protested the lack of attention to these category people that have resulted in some denials of those services. I think that's wrong. I don't think denials of services should be allowed unless there's a due process in place. There seems to be no means by which an individual who fits that category can appeal or protest. They just get dinged for their protest. And I believe that since the funding is essential for fire safety, not just to the individual, but the community. And I'm in Lewiston. My name is Patricia McCollum. There's no question there's stigma related to me. But stigma isn't the issue here. Safety, fire safety for everyone with equal protection for everyone is the issue. We need to restrict Weaverville Fire to its own application that says they have a priority of funding people who are senior, disabled, and low-income. And I believe that no one else but that category should be in that priority group. And until that priority group is met and that, those folks are met, should they put monies anywhere else.
All right, thank you for your comment. Anyone else? No? Okay, bring him back to the board. Questions on this?
Richard, what oversights are this, are there when we give this money? Or maybe that's a question. I don't know.
The oversights are when they turn in their receipts. Is we're going to make sure they're...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
There, our oversight is when they turn in their receipts. We review the receipts, make sure they're applicable and eligible for repayment. In their grant application does say they will focus on seniors, disabled, and low-income individuals. But it doesn't say that they can't assist others beyond that, but that is their focus.
But so we don't have any specific oversight in if they're fulfilling that?
No, we don't.
Okay. And is there a reason that that hasn't been put in these over the years? Patrick is shaking his head.
I wouldn't know. I mean, that's something that the county's grant office has, you know, handled that side of things. But the county enters into a cooperative agreement or a contract with each of its, you know, grant recipients. So I, you know, I guess, I mean, it would be up to the county to decide what kind of conditions to place, you know, on those. And, you know, just recognize that the more complex those conditions are, the more time that is spent, you know, by staff, you know, making sure that those are being complied with. So it's just, it's a balancing act. I would imagine that is, you know, the county has to think about. They don't get a lot of, you don't get a lot of cash to, you know, from this program to manage the program.
Okay. So if we find that they aren't holding up to their contract, then our only option is that the next year we don't renew it. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. If we don't feel they're holding up to their contract. I mean, again, as I said, we review the invoices. I kind of make sure they're appropriate. But if they're not, if we find, I suppose, that 10%, we're only focused towards seniors, disabled, or low-income, we could bring that back as part of the scoring for next year, yes.
I would think you would have, you know, you would have the ability at the time, because this is all on reimbursement. You would have some ability in a progression of the grant, you know, to say, hey, you know, at the halfway point, you've only done so much if you want to get through some money.
Okay, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
All right, any questions? All right. All right, I would entertain a motion somewhere.
I motion to approve the 5.4 item.
Second.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to 5.5. Before I start this item, I just want to pull the board for a moment. It is almost noon. We have two items left before our lengthy addenda item. I would like to see, I'd like to, after these two items break for lunch, then come back to the addendum item, which is a lengthy item. So does that work for the board? Yes, manager.
I would assume it just goes one at a time.
It could be a while, so.
I don't like it anywhere. I can't.
Cultivation. And there might be some things too we can go over on that. So we would, for those who are waiting for the item, I didn't want them to, unless they're welcome to, certainly sit for these next two items. But if we're going to break before the cannabis item.
So can I suggest that you give them a time frame?
Sure.
To come back at?
So if we're out of here by 12:30, I'd say 1:30. So if anyone is waiting for the cannabis item, and we're going to break after these two items and come back at 1:30 to resume. Okay, we are going to make it two.
It should be good. Yeah, it's really good. She just got back from Mexico with the doc. I was a groom's man. Ashley was a bridesmaid, and Jeb was a flower girl. Three of us are in there. Yeah, now we're just getting ready for two of you here in a couple months. Good. She's tired. Maybe just got back. Yeah.
I have to start at 7:00 AM. You left at 7:00 AM.
I just want to go to bed.
5:00 AM is probably better.
All right. All right, moving on to 5.5. Under Human Resources, increase the allocation for Sheriff Department from two to three records, technician one slash two. For records, technician three, maximum one, February 5th, 2019. And direct that said changes be made to the allocation of posting list dates. Proximate costs and salary and benefits per month for a recorder's technician one at an A-step is $4,908. And for records technician two at A-step, $5,293. Okay, thank you.
Still, good morning. Shelley Nelson, HR Director. And Jill Lynn here from the Sheriff's Department, in case you have any additional questions. So the Sheriff's Department, the Records Division, has typically had two record technician employees in the office. Upon the legalization of cannabis, we developed a department, the County Cannabis Department. And then we increased the code enforcement officers. The volumes of work that are generated from all of these changes has increased substantially for this department. As a result, they've had to often have overtime hours to keep up with this workload. It's affecting often their ability to keep up with other work requirements. Sometimes things may become late because of it. So they were requesting that we increase in allocation, allow them to recruit for and hire a third records technician. My understanding is this would be funded from cannabis and that additional allocation would be dedicated to cannabis work.
All right. Are there members of questions? Okay, members of the public, any questions on this?
Everett Harvey again. I don't have a question, but I have a support. So I think you want to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Morning, I'm Chair Tom Balaico, Douglas City. I think this is a good idea, too, as we move from the temporary licensing schema to annual license. There's going to be even more demands on the Sheriff's Department for live scan, et cetera. Now that we're not criminals anymore, that nobody really gains anything from overburdening our Sheriff's Department. So I do think this is a good idea and support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly jump in. I support this. I think this is very necessary. I do want to say that the current staff they have now has done an exceptional job keeping up with the volume. It's been very impressive to see them and how quickly they are responding, even though I know how overstaffed they are. So, you know, from the county council's office, we're in complete support of this and thank them for everything they've done.
Great. Comments? All right. And 5.
Thank you for your patience of standing here.
Okay. Item 5.6 under transportation. This is a long description page. Ratified Road Commissioner Rick Tippett's signature on Contract Changes Order 31 dash S2, 32, 33, 34, 34 dash S1 and 35 with Tullis Inc. of Redding, California, increasing the maximum cost of $190,481 to conduct erosion control, furnish and install two power gate systems on D line at the east side of the CHP facility to field inspect and determine why the Luminaire is now working, to hydrose and corm nat the select areas to provide traffic control to apply erosion incentive control, BPMs to select roadway slopes and replace the light standard on the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway 299 and Landscult Road for the Landscult Road Phase Two project. And approved contract changes order 36 with Tullis Inc. of Redding, California, increasing the maximum of $707,850.87 for the construction of signals and intersection of Landscult Road and Highway 299 for Landscult Road Phase Two project. No impact to the general fund. $459,997.87 from STIP funding and $508,334 from Secure Rural Schools road fund account. Okay. Thank you, Rick.
You pretty much gave the staff report an title there, so.
It truly was.
As we've discussed before, Supervisor Brown's, say, just again, road commissioner authority allows for the designated person, the road commissioner within the county to approve changes in projects up to 5% or in this case, if it's a large enough project to maximum $210,000 during the course of construction. And the purpose of that is to allow for things to keep moving forward and to not face construction delays that could be actually more costly than what the change order change order involves. So we kind of collect them over time and make sure that we get in front of you once we reach 210,000. But if there is one that's over 210,000, I have to bring it to you and have approval before I actually do the work. And if it's the case in this, I do have that traffic signal which was directed earlier to be done. Again, we gave you a description of everything, pretty much involves getting up the CHP gates that moved them around and back, and that all took place earlier. Then a lot of erosion control and then some fixing of the signal when it got, or Luminaire armed when it got hit by a vehicle, which was, we pursued an insurance claim and got a partial payment on it. That was that was what was passed and the total number of change orders in that took it to 190,481. And a lot of that work is actually still, because it's erosion control, still ongoing. We have to do some monitoring and some updated erosion control as we move forward until the project is finally accepted by the water board, which it takes about four or five So in there, I've, in the staff report, moving on to the signal change order, I included plans for what we had to do to install the traffic signal that was directed. And we, once we had the plans, we gave it to the contractor because he was under the original contract to install that signal and we removed it out as a change order to evaluate the roundabout. In there, they had the plans. We put it back to the contractor to get a revised price for the work. Came back substantially higher. And so we did meet with the contractor and discussed a lot of the different costs and went through and make sure that each one went through. I did put in a list here of some of the things that were substantial in nature that drove up the price. Essentially, there's been, as we've all been aware, there's been a significant increase in materials because of some of the tariffs and and really also the high demand that's going on for these materials around here with all the fires that happened. And further, Caltrans now requires where they used to require PVC pipe, they now require those to be steel pipe, which is considerably more expensive. We had decorative poles and bases, which added about 10% cost to the, just the pole and tails. And then we have the four-way beacon out there right now and the intersection lighting, we have to maintain that during construction. When construction's over, we have to go pull that out. And then there's some modification, the striping go from the four-way to the all-way. And then finally, there's some additional storm monitor monitor requirements. I just summarizing, the project total cost that we'd had allocation for was 600 or 6,572,000. And to date, including the change orders that were discussed, except for change order 36, we had 6,187,483, which left us a remainder of 384,517, which was about the usual cost of the traffic. But we have change order number 36, which is the traffic signal, $777,851. And then also, there's a coordination of inspection for this thing. And then finally, it's a project closeout, which is internal cost to close down and securing all the records from this project, going all the way back to day one of Landscult. So it's, still need to keep a little money set aside to take care of that. So our anticipated cost on that is 892,000. So going back to the 384,514, we need to augment the project cost, the final project cost of 508,000. Now, we had had that allocation of Secure Rural Schools. I initially thought that I'd recommend doing that when I wrote the staff report, but since that time, I've had a little bit more time to consider. And I was just going to suggest to the board that they consider directing me to include it and the RMRA, which is Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Count, which allows for matching funds to be used for STIP projects. The only reason I'm asking for that is because Secure Rural Schools is fairly unlimited on when you have to spend it and what you can spend it on versus road projects where RMRA funds are very restricted and you have to spend it in certain timeframes. So it's always best to spend the money with the rules attached to it first and then save on hold on the money that doesn't have the rules up for later. So with that, can I answer any questions?
Thank you. That was very informative.
Yep.
Rick, how much of this is coming out of, how much of this is not included in the original?
500.
508?
Thousand.
Okay. And you're asking for that out of STIP and RS, SRS, or possibly the RMRA?
Yes.
For this kind of luxury project that we already set aside money for and funded and all this kind of good stuff and while the roads kind of deteriorate? And road maintenance, RMRA? Road maintenance? Okay. I'm sorry. I can't support this at this point.
I have a quick question. Earlier, you made a comment that it was a partial insurance payment. Are they done or is there an additional payment they're going to make?
No, we we made a claim against the policy and the guy had no policy limits. And so we were, we were kind of at the end of the train, so to speak, and so we went out and recovered.
I just need clarification on the word partial. I wasn't sure if there was more money coming or if that was totally paid off. Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Supervisor Brown? No?
I don't know. I just, after being here four years, I appreciate the fact that I'm still shocked that a gate costs $90,000 and we're spending $100,000 to hydrose. It just blows my mind that these things cost us money.
Well, and the gate was, the gate was, first of all, it was.
I'm trying to justify it.
Yeah. I have one word for you or two words, prevailing wedge.
This is shocking.
Yeah, the engineer's always the lowest paid guy on the job site.
To Riley Brown, you're good?
I do not have any questions.
Now open up to the public.
He reminded me about the gate. The gate is on county property going into the CHP, which doesn't own the property, so I don't quite understand how you turn a county road into a parking lot, but that's all right. My other question is, is that we originally were going to have two new road accesses off of, off of Nugget Lane. Is that still part of the light project?
Yes. Access has been changed as it now.
As it is now.
And it'll be, it's shown in the plans if you look at it.
So you are going to do in front of marinas and in front of the market?
Oh, secondary access. No, that's.
That's been, okay. Okay. That was part of the, the original light project.
Okay. Kay Graves from the back of the room, Peanut Gallery. I'm just, I mean, I know you guys are flabbergasted, too, but it just keeps on going. This is like a black hole of money and it's never-ending. And this isn't going to be the last time it comes up. It's obscene how much money is going into this when I think you should have a meeting in Kettenpong. Take the magic school bus down there and bounce all the way down because it's nasty and those people pay taxes. And and the roads aren't plowed, but the roads hardly exist. They're, they're stunningly bad. And I know Supervisor Finley has told you that, that really, really, almost not there. So I don't know how this plays. I know, you know, you go to Leagues Cities and you meet your buddies and you pay this guy and you pay that guy and this guy's going to be next in line for contracts. And I know I'm not supposed to say that out loud, but even people who've come up here have said that, that work for McCullough. Who sued you guys for your little shenanigans with their contract? I mean, he came, one of the guys at work came up and said a little truth about who was going to get the paving contract and poof, they did. And the person that complained, who was number two, became number one. I mean, this is just a game of shuffling money and that's all good and fine and dandy if we have roads to drive on and we don't. So you guys need to take a more hands-on approach with this because it frustrates you, but this is your guys' job. This is your employee that you've hired to do this job. So you shouldn't complain about the numbers he brings to you. You should know more in detail and in depth where all that comes from because from the obscene traffic light that you guys didn't want and and Caltrans came in and bullied you into, on and on and on. This little bit, not even barely past a mile of road and one bridge. How much does that cost us? And now you're taking money from the Secure Rural Fund, School Fund, that could go to other roads? This is wrong and you guys, you guys need to be more hands-on on this and know where these contracts originate and why. Thank you.
Once again, John Brower from Junction City. And even though this does seem to be wrapping up this project, I agree, this is a lot of money that's been spent on one intersection in our huge county. Previous speaker is correct about roads in South County, Supervisor Finley's district in particular, being dangerous. And I think we'd all like to see some real resources thrown at those roads. This spring, after the melt, is the time to get on maintenance, so the rest of the road is just going to get completely destroyed. And it'd be nice to see the increased resources put into South County roads.
So I have a question, Rick. I know there was, during one quickly board report going a few months back, there was some delay. Caltrans was trying to work some stuff out before construction could really begin to back it, I don't know. Am I remembering that wrong?
I'm not remembering the particular conversation, but we did have a lot of back and forth.
Right.
The project and everything's worked out. We have the permit in hand.
Okay. So is there any way of scaling some of this cost back?
No, this is.
Fair bonds?
My attempt of trying to scale it back.
Well, Rick, when, when we made the decision on a roundabout or light, or only two alternatives, at that time, the roundabout would have been paid for by other agencies. And this one, we were told we had enough money to pay, pay for this outright and not have to dip in. Now, we have a half a million dollar cost overrun and maybe we wouldn't have that if we would have not gone down the roundabout.
Road?
Pun intended. Because we seem to be circling around here. But so, so by going the more prudent, cheaper route, it's going to cost us a half a million dollars. This is just all a jabber jabber after the fact, but, you know, it really is unacceptable that that we don't either have good enough information to make the decision upfront or that the state who has delayed this process over a year and, I'll remind you, it was over this, the type of light, the maximum, there was a term, that this was an eight-phase light and originally you wanted four phases. But so if the state changes their parameters from the original bid.
Right.
If I build a house and it takes me four years to build it, you don't make me say, wait a minute, there's a new building code. No, you get the building code that you started with. And so it seems to me that the state should give some ground on their coded updates and then not pay for those changes.
I, I have had this discussion with Don Anderson at Caltrans in District Two, as a matter of fact. Part of why, you'll notice the plan was done back in October, September. Why there was a gap was actually because we were having those discussions. So I focused the subject with them and had expressed my concerns.
He didn't sympathize, though.
He sympathized.
I thought he had the checkbook.
Okay. You told us he had the checkbook.
Actually.
You'll write it right now?
Right. He had the checkbook.
Not you, but going back to another conversation, he stood here.
So what are the two alternatives?
Right.
The alternative is to approve the contract. The second alternative would be to, to change order. Second alternative would be to reject the change order and instruct me to put it as a standalone project and put it out to bed and see if we get cheaper prices for that. I, my experience in doing that is I've never come out ahead. I've always come out worse than what I was before. So that would be a concern that I would share with you is that I don't think, I don't see it as a very successful alternative. Outside of that, our, our, we're pretty limited.
Question regarding that. Can, if you were to go out to bid, can you use the SB1 RMA LSR?
I, I have had this discussion with Don Anderson at Caltrans in District Two. As a matter of fact, part of why, you'll notice the plan from Dunnback in October, September, why there was a gap was actually because we were having those discussions. And so I focused the subject with them and had expressed my concerns.
He didn't sympathize though.
He sympathized.
I thought he had the checkbook.
Yeah, you told us he had the checkbook.
Actually.
You'll write it right now?
Right, he had the checkbook. Not you, but going back to another conversation, he stood here.
So what are the two alternatives?
Right.
The alternative is to approve the contract. The second alternative would be to change order. Second alternative would be to reject the change order and instruct me to put it as a standalone project and put it out to bed and see if we get cheaper prices for that. I, my experience in doing that is I've never come out ahead. I've always come out worse than what I was before. So that would be a concern that I would share with you is that I don't think, I don't see it as a very successful alternative. Outside of that, our, our will permit it.
Question regarding that. Can, if you were to go out to bid, can you use the SB one RMA LSR funds for that? Or it doesn't have to be your own?
Well, actually, it, that, that, thank you for reminding me, that is a problem. Then the three hundred and eighty-four thousand that's available, we cannot use a second contractor on the step allocation. So we would lose, I forgot about that part. That's probably the most, another very important piece of that. We would lose that. Now, I could use the hundred and fifteen that we have for step allocation out of the three hundred and eighty-four, but we'd use a little over two hundred thousand dollars by going with another contractor.
I'll stand out there with a sign like two, three days a week.
Like ten percent for seven hundred, you know, we could pay eighty grand a year.
I'll take less than that.
Well, I was gonna suggest an idea, I'm still pondering. Well, we're going back and no one else stepped forward, so. I think any more delays, we're just gonna end up paying more. It's like a terrible pill to have to swallow now. I can't imagine it later.
It's costing place and every time it gets cut down. It's sounding awful a lot like the voice of reason.
I must have been wrong.
Maybe just get it done and pass the problem on to the next generation.
This will finish, this will complete the project. We're not gonna come, it's not gonna come back before us again. This'll do it, correct?
In construction, I can never make that commitment.
These bids are current, correct?
They're, they're current, but it's, it's, again, it's, it's a, it's construction. And in my, all my years of experience, there usually is some changes as you go down and you open up the ground or, you know, you can find a different soil type. You can run into an unexpected issue that would generate a project change order. You know, as Lance Gulch had about thirty-six change orders. So I can't say never to never.
Manager, will you entertain a motion? Oh, I'm brainstorming. I had no choice. But it's, it's a, it's a hard, hard pill to swallow. Hold that thought for one quick second. Any ideas where, I mean, it's just, and you've heard it all from the board, any other avenues where you, we can make up some of this money to help, you know, for instance Supervisor Finley's or other, some roads, you know, it's taken away from roads.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve five dot six S presented without RMA, without RMRA LSK funding.
You got a motion on the deck. Could you explain what that means?
Yeah.
Rick had asked that he, he could be directed to use RMRA funding.
Right.
Road maintenance funding. And I'm taking, I would like to make sure that that's not part of the motion. It's as presented as Rick is requesting.
Doesn't that cost us more money? Well, I guess, I'll second for discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Doesn't that cost more money because he gets matching funds out of that?
No, it's, it's the same value, it's just the color of the money. One's got a color setter more restrictive than the other. So I'm saying spend more restrictive first.
Plus, I'm just offended by her taking road maintenance money when we have no road maintenance.
So I have one other discussion. Originally, we were told that, that all the piping and everything was put in in the Lance Gulch and everything was ready to go if we decided to go with a stoplight.
Right.
But, no, I, I had talked about that, that my past experiences have been in those types of situations. We have, we have some of the main crossings, so I think we're using two of the three. But the, I had a concern about that because my past experience has been, especially if we were gonna put the roundabout in, is all that ends up getting torn out and it's an expenditure that ends up being for naught. And from a cost benefit analysis, I saw it more practical putting it in by rock wheel rather than putting it in, which would have been rock wheel again and having it sit there and then end up not being usable.
That surely isn't my recommendation, or my recollection. So do we have plastic pipes in the ground that we're gonna have to take out?
No, there's no pipes that you take out, you bend it in place.
Okay. So whatever we.
Chair, I, I'd like to call for the question. We're, we're talking about piping instead of actually funding this product or project. Sorry about that.
And product.
So I'll call for the question, please.
I do have, I do have one question who she's been waiting in the wings from Supervisor Finley. So according to Supervisor Finley's motion, do you have funding to cover the whole project?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Would you like to repeat your motion? Yes, please, one more time, please.
Motion to accept item five dot six as presented and as Rick had requested a possible change with use RMRA dot LSK funding or SB one. I'd like to make sure that that's not part of it. It's just as presented.
Okay.
Second that motion.
I don't, I don't want to repeat it. So, okay, we have a motion. And a second, everyone understand that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Okay. So, well, I'll ask you offline since the motion's moved forward. All right, so we will be back at two to finish our agenda and also finish our close list of items.
You said it's one thirty originally.
And, and right shortly after I changed it to two.
She did announce it.
All right, we're about to begin. Okay, our last item under the addendum A, planning and zoning, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending section forty-three of treaty county zoning ordinance number three fifteen regarding commercial cannabis cultivation regulations on no fiscal impact. So as many of you have heard from us over the many weeks, these are the amendments that have gone before the planning commission and also before the ad hoc and as a result of the many changing pieces of legislation in the past year and also feedback that we've heard, not just at the planning commission, but of course here in public comment when issues are raised before the board. You'll notice that something that we can't maybe move forward on as we had hoped due to the fact that we're in the SEQA process. It's not like it won't be, it's, it's on our radar, so we will tap for it. With that, I will turn it over to my partner in ad hoc, my cultivation, for the details between the commission and the ad hoc and such. Do you miss anything?
No. I, I just will say that we do have the choice to put those in, but we've been advised that we won't make our SEQA dates.
So, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
So what you have, if you have the paperwork, and I guess I'm talking to the board this time instead of anyone else, we have two versions. We have the, the planning commission version, which has the bubbles on the, on the right side in the smaller type. And for us old people, the ad hoc is in the bigger, bigger type. And without the bubbles, most of the changes are running in blue underscore. So is it the board's will to go hit the highlights or hit basically every change?
Well, I'd say. Any takers on any of the questions?
I'll go for highlights.
Okay. And then we can fill in on, if that question does come up.
So there are several just housekeeping cleanups in, in this. So I'll, I'll skip over where we strike some of the old language. So on page four on both, both items, the first one on the ad hoc's review is canopy, which would be on page six of the PCs. One of the items that we did do is put things in alphabetical order in ours. So the one that went to the planning commission was an old version of canopy and that did not get changed there. When it came back to us, we put in the new state definition of canopy, canopy, and then added in that if the state changes, ours changed too. And that would be E on our, on the ad hoc. I on our ad hoc, we've, we've added, which would be H on the PC's version. The PC accepted the excluding, the drying out of the area, the, the, basically the buildings out of the two hundred square foot, two hundred percent of the area. It was recommended to the PC to go to twenty-five hundred, twenty, excuse me, two hundred and fifty percent. And the PC had accepted that, but now this is one of the items that the SEQA people believe that we should not tackle until we have our EIR finished. So we are advising that we remain at the two hundred percent and then we would, when we do multiple licenses addition later, we would take a look at doing that. Page five, we just did a little cleanup on the legal dwelling. This was not looked at by the PC. So we spelled out what legal dwelling is. We further defined what a secure structure is. And then under mixed light and outdoors, we did a little cleanup work here. As most of you know, that we have a different definition of outdoors than the state. The state's definition says if you're gonna do light deprivation, that has to be a mixed light. We don't feel that's the case. So we've removed our tying the two, both mixed light and outdoor, tying it to the state version. So we have separate independent definitions for, for ours. So mixed light in ours is only if you're having added light and the state has added light or light deprivation. Let's see where we are. This is page five. Page five on the PC, and is everybody keeping up? Am I making sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's probably a little once in a while.
Okay. All right. On the PC version, page five, Q, we remove the proof of residency. There was a state ruling on that, so that's no longer valid. So we removed the proof of residency. And we have struck in five, number T on the PC's, we struck the public lands version because it was no longer valid since they asked where that was used to be removed. So on our version, that would be a page six R and T slash U. Under, let's see, under this here, under the ad hoc version, wildlife exclusionary fencing. And that would be on the PC's page X, or not page, page six, number X. The PC wanted to remove wildlife exclusionary fencing since they wanted the fencing to be done with a security plan, which may or may not include a fence. There was a little disagreement with us, with the intent for this. The intent from the ad hoc was always to make a wildlife exclusionary fence and not a secure fence. The PC felt that they weren't as interested about the wildlife fence, but more about security. But, so in our version, on six AA, we remove the wildlife exclusionary fencing not being required for type C specialty cottages, but we leave the definition of what it is. And you'll see later that we remove the mandatory fencing. But if, if an applicant chooses to use fencing, then we, we'll require that that fencing gets looked at by the director to make sure that it's not a fence that traps wildlife or, or birds or things like that. Six A, ours, that's just cleanup language. On page seven B, we, we removed the priority for specialty cottage in the Water Works District One Hay Fork area because we are recommending removal of the Hay Fork area from the opt-out, blockout, whatever you wanna call them. Item D on ours cleans up urgency ordinances and so does F. And I is another cleanup. On R, page eight A, there's no longer a necessity to classify the difference between medical or adult, so we strike that. And on A seven, VI, we remove how you get the verification of proof of residency since we no longer require that. John, you like my speed up earlier?
Yes, sir.
So in the, in the speed up version here is that the, the planning commission had made some changes to the, changes and recommendations to the multiple licenses. So this is, will be on page nine B on both copies. It's probably not relevant at this time to go through those changes because again, the SEQA advice is that to hold those off until our SEQA is done. And then this would have an independent SEQA analysis that would be tied to our EIR. So we are advising striking all of B. So on page 10, we're, on 10 F four, ID, that if somebody is, since we do put priority on license number where you fall in the system, if you move or transfer your license number, we allow you to keep your original number. So if you're changing your premise, you don't lose your place in line. The legal parcel or the, on G, which was the legal dwelling unit, that's just reinstating what we had in our first three. There was a typographical error, so that may need to be put back in for clarity. So, that may need to be put back in for clarity. All right, on the page 11. The, under the planning commission, they asked that the registration phase be used a number four.
I can't remember what it was. That was just a, didn't come out of commission. It was just discussion with staff.
Well, it says here, PC recommended it, but, all right. So, on four, where am I, four, I. So, these, this goes to the type three licenses, which type three, we are striking the 15-16 priority and just going to license number priority. So, all the 15-16 license holders would have priority because their numbers would be older than a 17-18. But this opens it up for 17-18s based on the priority of your number. So, if you're the first 17-18, you'd have the highest priority moving forward.
And I do want to clarify something with staff. For those already in the system on type threes, Rick, that doesn't affect them. Meaning, they're in the process.
Yes, sir. They're still in the process. This is the ones that wanted to be eligible. Okay. And then on to BI still. The planning commission recommended that with your one acre, that you would need a conditional use permit unless you're an agriculture act preserver or act forest. So, I will ask Rick and staff if that, if there was a change in the SEQA philosophy since we last talked about this.
Yes. It's been recommended by our SEQA council to strike that for the time being and take it up when we look at stacking for reevaluation later on after the SEQA document is complete, the EIR.
Okay. So, as Rick said, since we put this together, SEQA council, and looked through this and picked that one out. I believe that was the only change that he recommended from the ad hoc document. Okay. And we have the on B two, that if the environmental document allows, when it passes, that the director can increase the type three licenses to 30 just automatically without having to come back to us. And again, those people will be based on numbers of your license number. So, a 16-17 would have first priority, but they're already in. So, 17-18s would pick up further. All right. So, again, on the PC version, five, five, three, or III, I, the, this was another one that was a typo. And we're clearing that typo of the numbering up. So, that's clear that that's a part of this ordinance, and that's for all these items. Previous version, they got doubled labeled. And on our page 11, planning commission, page 12. Item V or five, Waterworks District is taken out of the opt-outs, and Bucktail subdivision is added in. And Bucktail had a request to be taken out of this. I think 27 of the 35 houses there had asked that. And we've been taking them out of all the other ordinances. And then, later in five, we removed the Waterworks District One out of the date because they're no longer part of that in our recommendations. I hate to do this, but I missed a PC recommendation on page 10. And the ownership transfer, F. The PC in a five of vote recommended that no license shall be allowed within the opt-out area to transfer. And if a person wanted to transfer their license, they would have to transfer it out of the opt-out area. So, they recommended that be put in F. The ad hoc did not take a position one way or the other and bring that up to the board. That is a popular idea in the opt-out areas. But the board as a whole mauled that one down. All right. So, my, page 13, is where I'm supposed to be now? Oh, no, I'm sorry, page 12. Page 12 in the PC version. Again, under five, VI six, the designated area where we were moving the number up to 250 percent of your license, we are recommending to, because of SEQA reasons, to leave that at 200 percent, which is where it is today. And then, we would take that and look at that during the later discussions.
Supervisor Rose?
Yes.
If I may, we were just talking briefly about that. Since you have the designated area definition better described at the beginning, maybe recommend to strike that particular section so that we only have it once in the code, not twice.
You're asking to strike all of number six?
Yeah, and just refer back to the definition that we have at the beginning.
Okay. Something to talk about. All right. And then, on the, our copy 12, page 12, six C, staff had asked for diversion to be changed to surface water diversion or rainwater, rain catchment system, which is a wider, more accurate terminology. On page 12E of ad hocs, where we change that you shall have exclusionary fence, we say you may have exclusionary fence. And then, we add in, the director shall review all exclusionary fences for aesthetic and wildlife and our human safety concerns, and can be prohibited fencing or sheen deems acceptable. So, if you are planning to put in a wildlife fence, the director will clear what you're using. On page 13P of ours, we're removing, this is an old one, old line that was added in before all the other rules came down. So, no gas product, no butane allowed in this, which probably should have been removed before, but we're just still cleaning things up. On page 14, to, under seven V, we have changed, we have the notification of if you have a problem. Instead of just verbal, we are saying that, you know, you have seven days after a written notification to make sure that people who are notified know what's going on. And, I'm getting there, John. So, on page 15, which is item eight C, we're making a change in how you pay upfront. So, when you, we're splitting this from, instead of your application fee and your total fee, we were saying that if you pay 50 percent of the total fee, we'll call you your application. So, if, for example, if you're specialty cottage, outdoor, half a 750, and then, if you get turned down, you don't lose the whole amount. You just lose what that is. That does get put against if you are accepted and moved through, then you'll just owe the other $375 in that. Which doesn't show in color here, but is a change, is eight CII or two, specialty outdoors, we've dropped from $4,000 to $3,000. And under item eight, number seven, the transfer fee is 50 percent of the original. If you're moving to a, if it's the same owner going to a different parcel, if it's a whole new, excuse me, if you're just selling it as is, if you're moving to a different property, then you'll have to pay 100 percent of the license. So, that is, I believe, all of the changes.
Any technical questions? Or staff, or Keith, or I? Do I open it up to the public? I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, Rick. On page 12 of the ad hoc, are we removing six totally? That holds so, so seven will be now six? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're, as a discussion we'll have after we come back.
Okay. I just want to clarify that was what his recommendation was. Yeah, sorry.
That's my recommendation to remove that and leave it referring to definition one. Definition I is that we, that way you don't have to.
Okay. Yeah, okay, great, thanks. All right. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Let me step forward. We have questions, comments? I agree with you.
Hello, board. Nicholas Holliday, Burnt Ranch. I was looking through the changes, and I noticed that, I understand that the stacking of licenses is going to be put on hold. But I would like to talk about something inside that page nine, section B. As regards to the setback for variances for ag land, I just don't see how that's going to affect the SEQA in any way. So, I was wondering if that could be put back into tier three, maybe? Type three licenses? Reason being, if anything, I can, on my 200 acre parcel, meet the setbacks. But what it would be asking me to do would be cultivate in the back 100 acres of my property, which is timberland, as opposed to the front 100 acres, which has been ag land for over 100 years, involving basically zero environmental damage. Whereas, if we follow this and I was held to those, then I would be creating roads, logging, running generators up in the woods as opposed to down in the ag land where there's been an established farm for over 100 years. Also, the CDFA has, their stance on ag land has been, it's always been SEQA exempt. So, they're wrapping their head around it right now, I suppose, with all the scandals. And we were just trying to figure out, you know, if that was a possibility to have the setbacks be put into the type three and not be stricken from the whole ordinance here. And other than that, I think we're probably good besides the license number. Our license numbers, like, I'm number 50, but I don't think I'm the 50th that has received a license. So, I'm not sure how that translates to priority or anything like that. You know, I believe I'm like 15th or something like that. So, it kind of hits a little screwy there if we were to go off of just the license numbers. So, thank you for your time.
Could you read me the definition of a 20?
Could make your point and then...
Why the definition of 20 is...
We're going to answer these questions after everyone speaks.
Do I get to come back?
We're going to answer from here, and I've made a note.
Hi. Cory Peterson, Hayfork. I think removing the trendy Waterworks District carve out is one of the best changes I've seen come forward lately. Hayfork never opted out of anything, and the community is hungry for opportunity. Many of our legacy farmers are just now coming out of the shadows. And right now, there's at least two properties I can just think of off the top of my head that are in that carve out area that are just waiting. We're already starting on environmental compliance. And really, in the future, I would really like to see the 500 cap be removed and also have pre-existing cultivation areas only added in because we have, the last number I heard was an estimated 7,000 cultivation areas that have been established already in our county. We still have people developing more. And so, just allowing more development rather than bringing in these pre-existing areas is just allowing more environmental damage. And also, we've seen that people who are committed to the county and state licensing programs actually follow through with the environmental compliance work where if they don't have that opportunity, they might not be following through in the same way. Regarding the fencing, I think it makes sense to make fencing optional, but requiring the director to review all wildlife exclusionary fencing for aesthetics and wildlife issues is setting up the process for more unnecessary delays. The inspectors should be able to identify the fencing issues out in the field if they're trained properly. And right now, the way that it's written, the implementation seems to be unrealistic and cumbersome. And then, my last comment is, set for section 9E in the, I believe it's the ad hoc version. The language really should be changed to say that the county shall conduct a B study, not may conduct a B study. A B study should not be optional and is inappropriate to give program proceeds to the sheriff department. The cost of licensing should reflect the actual cost of administering the program. Paying the sheriff with funds is no different than using the funds to, generated by the program, to obtain a programmatic LSA with fish and wildlife to help fix our county's non-compliant culverts and roadways. So, I feel like it's a very slippery slope to start obligating those funds into different areas rather than just using those funds to administer the licensing program. So, that's all I have.
Good afternoon, supervisors. John Brower from Junction City. And I'm looking at the ad hoc version of the document. And we're starting on page one of it, item C, canopy. We want to make very, very sure that it's a proper state definition of canopy funds its way back into this. There were issues with that at the planning commission. The current California Department of Food and Agriculture definition of canopy is what we are all talking about, not a proposed definition that was never adopted. And then, further down, as far as...
John, I want to stop you for, are you saying this isn't the current? John, I'm gonna stop you for, are you saying this isn't the current one?
I'm saying, I don't, we still don't see it spelled out.
On page four?
Yes, on page four. If we're going to spell it out, we can spell it out, this...
It is spelled out. You're looking at the same...
Sorry, Madam Chair, I think he's looking at the wrong one.
Is there state code? Oh, that's possible. We can be referred, yeah, it doesn't look like, is there state code? If somebody could just make sure to state that clearly.
So it's on page four E on amendments from ad hoc version, and we go on to say that canopy means the designated area at a licensed premises that will contain mature plants at any point in time. This definition is intended to mirror the definition of canopy as defined by the State of California or as may be amended.
And I'm fine with that definition, as long as we're gonna state it.
Yeah, it's what's proposed.
And then, if we're going to strike the, okay, so further down on the designated area, item I, the, if we're gonna strike the other reference to designated area further in the document and only rely on this definition of designated area to describe designated area, we need to be sure to include the clause that allows for the planning director to approve, or CDFA to approve greater than 200%. So there is some mechanism, which has been in our existing ordinances and it's in here. So there is some mechanism for folks that do have spread out gardens that have been permitted all along the way, thus far, to still, to be able to continue to do that. Is section where somebody just mentioned to strike, maybe it was Rick, the other mention of designated area.
Does that beat with page 12, five, six?
Yes.
So you're asking unless otherwise approved by the planning director or by the California Department of Food and Agriculture?
Yeah, it's important that we retain that.
Thanks, everyone.
And then...
I know your bell went off, but I'll give you a few more, 'cause I interrupted with the canopy.
Thank you. The proof of residency, I think, was a great idea in the beginning and mostly served its purpose for the first couple of years, but it probably is time we move on from that. The other, another important thing is, the Planning Commission late at night seemed to have also included a recommendation to not allow for transfer within an opt-out zone or to an opt-out zone, but the folks in the opt-out zones have never weighed in on this. And if you continue reading the document on page 10 of the ad hoc version, under letter F, and then I, this is something that's been in our ordinances the whole way along, and it should also be retained. It says, "All exceptions that apply to the original license shall transfer with the license." And I believe that would preclude limiting the ability to transfer in those opt-out zones if they were to enjoy all the exceptions from the original licenses. And it could be seen as a taking by the government of somebody's valuable asset to not allow them to transfer their license. For instance, if someone's put all this effort to becoming compliant within an opt-out zone, if they haven't received any complaints, but they want to, say, pass on their operation to an heir, or another family member, or sell it, they wouldn't be able to do that. And it seems like that could be contrary to that clause, this other clause in the ordinance. And then, on the next page, page 11 of the ad hoc version, it's on, it's under the medium license types, type threes, says, "On July 1st of 2019, the director may increase the number of type three licenses up to 30 if the environmental documents support this increase." It seems like we may or may not have a certified CEQA by July 1st of 2019, but it seems like it could be after that date also, not just on that date, that the director might receive that information from the CEQA, a certified CEQA document, to make that decision. It seems like that July 1st could be, it could say on or after, instead of just on, in case we missed that date. And another thing is the, so here is, on the next page, page 12 of the ad hoc version, item VI. "The designated area shall not exceed 250% of the area for the license types unless otherwise approved by the planning director or by the Department of Food and Agriculture." That approval by the planning director could be viewed as a discretionary process and might be able to be worked into our CEQA document also, as another discretionary review.
Okay.
My name is Lisa Barrow from Hayfork. First, I would like to speak in favor of removing the Hayfork Water District from the carve-out. Thanks for including that change in this amendment. Your vote today could be central to Hayfork's success in this time of transition. This is also a good time to think about next steps in this evolving process. Hayfork needs incentives. The type H license is an incentive, a very inexpensive outdoor specialty cottage license available to residents in the Hayfork Water District. Maybe we could just use those 30 licenses already set aside for the Hayfork Water District and make them type H licenses? Just a thought. And I had one more comment. Thanks to the people who prepared the documents for the agenda, I really appreciated the one with the comments explaining each revision and the positions of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and the ad hoc. Thanks again for your service to our county.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Board, Tom Belenko of Douglas City. I like most of these, I know, I think we've generated some good discussion, I look forward to it. Particularly, I like the fencing. I've railed against fences up here for years now. I like "may." It's so much more permissive than "shall," and where it makes sense, it sounds great, so thank you, I think that makes a lot of sense. And it does get into some of these site-specific things where someplace a fence makes perfect sense, other places it doesn't. The other thing, taking back out the exception for the type threes on ag, I preserve and ag bars, I know we're in delicate times, although, when you take away what happens to this product when it leaves Trinity County, as regards the farmer and what's going on here, we're talking about agricultural activity on agricultural land, seems like something that should be a no-brainer, I understand how things are, but it's like a Christmas tree farm on TPZ, shouldn't be a big deal. So I would like to see that exempted, you know, we're talking about big properties that are zoning and plan designation already support for agricultural activities as a plant, I know you all know this, but as a plant itself, it's just another plant somewhere on the spectrum between, you know, corn and tomatoes in terms of its nutritional and water needs, well to the drier than alfalfa, for instance. So it's not some like strange thing that consumes all this water, it's just another plant. So on ag land, I think, you know, the impacts are ones that we already anticipate. So I encourage you to look at that a little bit, and otherwise, thanks for keeping this moving.
So Tom?
Don't, I just have a clarification, make sure I'm hearing your pitch correctly. When we talk about, of course, the ag provision was embedded in the multiple licensing, and of course, multiple licensing has been put on hold for the short time. So I...
Did I write that?
What?
For the short time.
For the short time. So which part of the ag are you referring to, what is currently listed under type three? The conditional use permit piece?
So I thought it went up to and included, I guess, when we were saying stacking, you could go up to four, so I thought that translated to type three as well, so maybe I misread that, which does happen.
Did you, so I'm just trying to make sure we're comparing...
Because it was new, I mean, as of before these amendments, yes, somebody on ag still needed a CUP.
Okay.
So I don't know if that change was tied directly to the stacking.
It was, and so that's why I would make sure we were comparing oranges and oranges and nots.
Okay, so, I kinda like tantrums, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Morris, Justin Mock in Hayfork. I do think you guys actually put quite a bit of effort into this set of amendments, I'm impressed. I like the additional documentation from the ad hoc, kind of gives us a little bit of insight, instead of just such palace intrigue all the time, we have a little bit of an idea what's going on. My main focus is on the page 15 of the proposed ordinance, the fee section, and I think it's pretty obvious that this kind of, we've never had a fee study. And so in my version on page 15, it's subsection E, and this has been, I think, since the urgency ordinance, it says, "Within 12 months, we may have, the county may conduct a fee study." I think it's time we changed it up to "shall," just require it. I think it's past due. Honestly, I don't know why we haven't even had one yet. And it really kind of, I noticed it was brought up, the specialty outdoor licenses changed from $4,000 to $3,000. I'm not sure how that actually happens. Was there a fee study to show that that was allowed? Are we just winging it? Because a lot of these percentages here to transfer licenses and so forth, they're just 50%, and we're just kind of estimating again, and it's been three years now, so I'm not sure when or if, you know, we're ever gonna have some real numbers, but I kind of feel like as a small license holder, it doesn't cost $5,000 a year to verify my property, it's compliant with a license. So I think it's time we had a fee study. I also think that at some point, we need to stop providing money for the general plan to pay. I mean, at what point are the licensed farmers not going to continue paying to that? They paid for two years, has that been three years, four, five? I mean, by the time the general plan is actually done, it's gonna be 20 years. So are we talking 20K? Sorry to get upset, but some of these things just don't seem to make sense, and there's no drive to actually clarify these things. And if there's a fee study, I'd love to have the data available to the license holders in particular, and the farmers, the public, everybody, because it seems like funds are being misallocated, in my general opinion, because the problem is, you go into planning and the staffing looks anemic in there, are we not having enough money to pay the staff? They're overworked, it's not fair to get the brunt of, you know, all complaints. I just think this situation's untenable. Thank you.
Board, Lisa Wright from Lewiston. Excuse my voice. I have some kind of like English school teacher, a few things. On page four, well, I just wanted to refer to the designated area in particular, so the state designated area, you'll only find that definition under the definition of canopy. So my concern here is that we're gonna confuse things for our farmers by having a designated area that doesn't fall into CDFA definitions of designated area, so I would like a closer look taken at that. As well, please reference V, let's see, five, A, little six, I'm not gonna take time to see the page, but it's, you have 250% in there, rather than reverting back to the 200, so just a little correction catch there, even though I think designated area should be removed because it's not part of CDFA. On page five, outdoor cultivation, so this could be problematic, okay? So the county's recognizing light deprivation, the state is not. If you have a small outdoor license, you're gonna allow them light debt, but when the state inspector comes on and they don't have a mixed light license, they're gonna be able to compliance with the state, and they're probably gonna have them cut their plants. So please do not include that, although I fully support that light debt should be an outdoor, it's not, according to the state, and you're putting conflicts in place with the license types and compliance for farmers. Next, page six, just a comment on wildlife exclusionary fencing, that was discussed quite a bit at Planning Commission, it was recommended by Fish and Wildlife to not have wildlife exclusionary fencing, and I think they're our responsible party for CEQA and other environmental matters, so we really should pay attention to them. I do like the provision that allows the planning director, though I agree with the previous speaker, it should probably be the inspectors, because the planning director's way overloaded. Going on to page number nine, multiple licenses. So I understand striking it for CEQA, non-compliance by the county, but there's a provision in there that actually doesn't deal with a CEQA or an environmental matter, and that is the allowance that, for individuals to own multiple parcels that would still have only one license, and that was stricken as well. And I think that's really impeding the potential for success for farmers, if they can't own multiple parcels. Go ahead and limit it to one license, but that doesn't have anything to do with CEQA, and I don't think it should be stricken as part of that overall paragraph. Certainly, you know that I've been opposed to the carve-outs from get-go, I think that they're illegal. If I have an agriculturally zoned parcel within any area, I should be afforded all the rights and responsibilities of anyone outside in an ag-zoned area, for example. So zoning is the key, it goes contrary to the general plan as well as state law. I strongly urge you not to limit the transfer license to those compliant farmers currently, because you will be depriving them of their rights to sell their businesses, and that's really critical. There's some other corrections, but I'll pass it on to Leslie. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Deidre Brower. As far as these updates go, I think it would be nice if we're gonna have setbacks that they're consistent with what we have right now, so for example, someone on ag even say has this 350-foot setback, their current 10,000 square foot of garden is fine in that, now they go type three, now they're too close, they're 500 feet away, and they couldn't even have that 10,000 there. So if we could be consistent in what our setbacks are gonna be for each type, you know, on the same three, on each type of license, that would be nice, and particularly on ag parcels, I mean, it's ag agriculture, so I don't think they should be as strict. Also, along properties that are zoned ag, when it comes time to perhaps open up for type threes, or maybe not even all the way up to an acre, but just an additional 10,000 or something, if we could look to include more properties that are zoned ag, not just necessarily go with 50 acres or more. And it is a little confusing what Lisa was saying about the different definitions, but my experience with CDFA has been, they understand that the Trinity ordinance includes tarps as outdoor, and they clear that with planning when they call for local authorization, and it hasn't been a problem so far for us. And, you know, there was some discussion, I believe, I think it was maybe the last supervisor meeting where Rick gave some numbers about, this is what the program brought in, and this is how much went to the sheriffs, and so I think that's a concern of a lot of people. I don't know if it's possible to work something in where if, you know, the program is funding enforcement of non-licensed farms, and perhaps any asset seized could go toward restoration or, you know, back into the program funds, or something like that. Thank you.
And Barrow, Hayfork, I won't take time, Mr. Chair, but I just want to say thank you for taking Hayfork out of the carve-out situation we were in. It's been a long discussion, and I really appreciate it. I'll beg you.
Double day, Junction City. Congratulations, you guys are about to vote, this is exciting, getting somewhere, I'm happy. I did want to comment about one thing. From my personal point of view, I'm really hoping that the way that we allocate... From my personal point of view, I'm really hoping that the way that we allocate the funds for this program gets to the building department as soon as possible. I'm standing here waiting on a phone call. Hopefully it comes whether I actually get permitted. I paid three months ago. It's just understaffed. That's what's going on here. That's, that's my biggest complaint about this program, about people getting in and moving through it. I don't know why it's taking that long other than confusion from not having the money to actually implement the program. So, thank you.
All right. That's it? Okay. Does anyone need a break before we get into all these questions?
Madam Chair, I would like to request if Leslie or David could both look up the two items that were specifically called out, the mixed lighting and the CDF designation of canopy, to just have something for us to look at real quick, if you don't mind them doing that, taking the time.
Yeah, they'll probably need to find a computer, I assume, to take those.
You mean verifying the definitions?
Yes, just to make sure that we mirror the state. I thought those were...
We don't mirror the state.
We don't. Okay. And we're going to go through that. So we'll go through the list. And if we need them to do that, we will. Okay. Does anyone need a break though before we go? No? Okay. So we'll tackle comments and questions. All right. So we did have a couple of comments on this transferring in and out of the, well, in or of the opt-out sections. So that, if I recall correctly, the ad hoc brought this lifted to the board. Heard some comments on that. So that is something we will need to decide.
We remain neutral even though it was a five-o vote at the planning. And it was brought in by planning.
Yeah, unless it's opt-in, we didn't.
We didn't request it.
Comments for members on that topic?
I wasn't, I didn't hear you.
Sure.
No, I thought... Supervisor Finley, did you say something? I'm sorry.
So if you, just going back real quickly, the commission recommended that if you are, let's see if I get this straight, if you are an opt-out zone and you want to transfer your license, let's say someone buys your property and that license, the commission's recommending that that is not allowed to happen. We as an ad hoc stayed neutral on this and thought we'd bring it back to the board for a little bit more discussion on the item.
Well, I concur with, I think it was Mr. Brower that came up and said that if somebody has gone to the planning department and through all their licensing and everything else, it just seems to smack in, you know, capitalism and being American to not be able to sell your license. I mean, if you're tired, you want to retire and go on your merry way. And then you're not even compensated. So I would like to see the transfers go forward with the properties, whether they're in an opt-out or opt-in. And especially those people that went forward in the opt-out zones. They jumped in before they were opted out and really wanted to be in the light. And then they were, you know, met with, I'm going to use the word hostility. So I think the least we can do is compensate them if they decide to sell their property and their license.
Okay. I've made a note. Is anyone in agreement with that? All right, so moving on. I've been tackling budgetary issues separately. I'm just trying to get through this ordinance. And Supervisor Groves, certainly we can tackle... Well...
Well, may I ask, is it our intention to sit here and do this, this work here at the DIAS?
No, thank you for asking. I just, these are some things that weren't decided. And that was a neutral stance that we had taken as ad hoc. There were some questions that maybe the board has, that was raised from the public.
So I'll answer, while the legal dwelling under our definition means a building intended for occupancy as living quarters built prior to 1972 or a property permitted by the county.
Someone had asked for that definition. Sorry, John, we're not...
Well, I was going to say, it should be if it's on the tax roll to...
That's not a legal dwelling.
It should be 1972. If it's on the tax roll.
It is not a legal dwelling.
However...
Believe me, I...
Yeah, why are you charging?
Well, that is a question I asked when I had a building that was not...
Yeah.
But that does raise administrative question. And we've asked Rick of that. So we have received calls over the couple of years here and there of folks considered illegal dwelling, built before '72. It is on the tax rolls. And I think I asked you this and Leslie the other day, that if they're on the tax rolls, we let them go. Do you want us...
Yeah. What we're looking for is, we're looking for evidence of an existence of building or structure. And if it's clearly marked on the tax rolls, '72 and before, then that's, we'd use that as evidence that it's existing. But, you know, there's other ways of proving it also, if you have a picture. But really what we're kind of looking for is to make sure you've been paying taxes all these years and try to say it is, so...
And of course, if you add it onto your building and have an open permit or never pulled one, that's a different story on a structure that's...
Well, yeah, if you have an active permit, you initiate the permitting process. You have to complete that process.
Can I make a comment on the revenue streams?
Sure.
Permitting fees would go directly back into our building planning. Notice of violation fees, or, I'm sorry, not fees, notice of violation, fines can be put into general fund and used for the sheriff. So there's completely two separate revenue streams. They're not intermixed and sheriff is not getting any permitting fees as far as we know. And it's most likely illegal if he does. No, it's not.
Right. I wouldn't necessarily say that. There are some case laws that go out there that says the fees can be used for developing the entire program, including enforcement aspects to it. But your first part of the statement was correct. There is a lot of additional funding that is coming in from fines and fees and through bait and costs that is being used to supply the sheriff's department with additional staff.
And that staff is narrowly focused the majority of time on enforcing on the program for those who are nonlicensed holders.
Correct.
So it's not like...
That's what I'm...
That's very good. Okay. Just want to make sure we are on the same page. And then, of course, we are certainly well aware of the fee study. We're waiting on some additional data to the department to put into the calculations that we've been waiting on for a while. We think that will be assumed to us. I think Rick has been waiting on some information. And we apologize for the delay, but it is certainly on our radar on the fee study. Okay. Supervisor Groves?
I mean, you want to continue to talk about fee?
Yeah, go ahead. If you have something else.
So the question on the general plan. And we've stated all the way along, the general plan will come off when, when the general plan is, is... I don't think we decided begun or ended. But the reality is, is we have a 35-year-old general plan that doesn't include cannabis. And we're really getting far out there by trying to fit cannabis into a square hole here. And, and so this industry is causing us having to come forward and change our general plan and our zoning ordinance. And so this is one of the problems which I totally get when you say, well, it's ag ground, put it on ag ground. Well, the problem is, we spent 40 years making ag parcels that aren't ag parcels. And it's not, nowhere in our ordinances or our zoning ordinances do we take in consideration cannabis as an agricultural product because it blizzard at the time. So if we had a good zoning ordinance and if we had a good general plan, this would have been done years ago because these things would have been taken into consideration. So there is a time limit on general plan monies. And, but cannabis has to pay its share for what it has caused for the county to have to do in the future.
Also, the last time a general plan was even brought before this board, looking at a grant, it was $800,000 for the general plan. And I'm sure it's probably going to cost us a million or more now.
The estimate right now is three million. We have over a million in general planning. And we are working diligently with getting a couple of million out of the state to get this off the ground. And I had, I made a mistake in saying that we were going to have it started or at least the, looking for people to do this by the end of last year. But I should have learned by now, after four years, things never happen the way that we're told they're going to happen. So if that money comes through the state, then things would start very quickly. And we were planning for that money as we speak.
So Supervisor Groves, we had a question and it has come up before. Two members of the public brought it up, outdoor versus mixed light. We allow light depth. Do you want to explain that a little bit, just for clarification?
Well, I think most people understood it. So our alternative is if we go to the state definition, we would have to put a mixed light licensing in on the larger tiers. Since we are focused on the outdoor, this gives people more flexibility. So if we went to the state definition, our outdoor cultivation license holders couldn't do light depth. And I think that's a pretty common practice and that most growers want to continue to do. So I have high hopes that the state will figure this out at some point and change their definition to what ours are since we've kind of lived down this whole way.
And if I'm not mistaken, my staff, they have, you've had these conversations with state. They're aware of where we're coming from. So it's not foreign to them anymore. Maybe a year ago it was, but...
I think it's Deidre's statement. I don't think we've heard one case of the state not getting the fact that we're different than they are.
Right. Okay. We had the issue raised on multiple parcels. I think one license holder, multiple parcels. We did look at that.
We looked at that, felt that that should be put on, there was some concern if it is a land use issue or a CEQA issue or not. I think it can argue me both ways. But since staff is to have an environmental document by June 30th, I don't want to put any inadventure to that. I mean, we have to guarantee having this done in anything in the way or possibly in the way. If it, if it doesn't work and in August 15th, I say, yeah, well, we added that thing. Don't worry about it. Rules be lynched. So that's why it's held out for now. Being cautious, I guess, is the better term.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Keep that...
I was thinking on you writing all this.
I am. So that was actually my light.
Oh, it was...
Light turned off a little bit ago. So just a couple of things that were brought out that I thought were points that I'd like to see on page five. Towards the bottom there, it says, somebody brought up, I think, multiple times, the clause be under the director to agree more than 200%. I just don't want that to fall by the wayside. I'd like to see some discussion around that. And then the word shall and not may. I actually thought that we had changed that in previous things. But whether we have or not, I think we should...
Where was it?
We agree that.
I'm sorry, on the fee, I think it was Mr. Hawkins that brought it up, that it should say shall and not may. And then I thought there was a really good point on page 11, under the double I's, on July 1st. I think we should say or when applicable because maybe we'll get our CEQA done early. Why are we so pessimist? Let's be on the optimist. Okay, so I think that we should say when, or when applicable instead of the date. Pardon?
Or just up the date.
Yeah, when applicable is what I'm saying. Whenever, let's hope that we can do it sooner instead of later. And I appreciate the change on, on page 12 with the surface water diversion. I think that's awesome. And then to go back on, also on page 12, we were going to discuss the removal of Roman numeral six. So I just don't want those things to not get captured in this discussion. Okay. So a couple of questions on some of those points that Supervisor Chatwood just made. So it is a good point about the, I think it's the fencing on the 200% where the director can give direction.
Not fencing, but... So, I mean, I have no problem with crossing out six and moving the otherwise approved by the planning director over to the definition. Ellen, is anybody writing these things down?
Yeah. I'm trying to keep up with you, but you said, say it again about six?
On page 12, item six.
The designated, so you're saying move that portion?
Rick has requested that we don't need that since we changed it in the definitions. But as John pointed out, we have this other part that's not in the definition.
Correct, right.
Which is otherwise approved by the planning director or by the California Department of Agriculture.
Yeah. I would suggest we just leave it at planning director.
I was interested in that concept because otherwise we're allowing the state to overturn what we have. And we have different goals.
And it really is our, our definition, not the state's definition. That rule isn't meant to take your life.
So if I may reiterate, definitions are definitions, they're not laws. So you do need to have it in the body of your, otherwise you're just saying what it would mean if you were to have it in the body.
Okay. So you've got to lead with, Rick was wrong and leave this in.
I thought you'd get there.
So we're going to just leave it in and strike the state. Okay. So you have that?
And be a 200.
And be a 200, correct. Okay.
That is stricken.
So Margaret, the shall and may regarding the fee study. Any, I mean, I think our intention was always to do one, not not do one.
So of course, from a legal perspective, shall means you have to do it. May means you have the pleasure of doing it. Yes, we do have to be studied. I just wonder if the issue is, or what we need to talk about is the timeline in order for that to get done. And of course, I can't tell you that. We'd have to ask the planning department in terms of what their timelines are. And again, I know they have a lot on their plate. So I wouldn't want to presume how they have the capacity to do that. So we'll handle that.
You're also some personnel, you know, someone mentioned needing it. And yes, we're trying to wait on staff when that happens. You know, it'll be those changes too, so...
Right, okay.
I will point out to the questions out there, people missed it because they went home in the last meeting. But the funding is not the bottleneck of the staffing. So time limitations, you know, getting the right people, all those sort of things are bottlenecking more. Funding is available to do these along.
Quite candidates, there's very, very, very competitive job market right now.
So in terms of the date, is July 1st date, is there a problem if we were to put when applicable?
That's on page 11, four, I.
No, I haven't heard of that. We just take the date out and the director may increase the number of type 3 licenses up to 30 if the environmental documents support this increase.
Just stated it.
Make sure of that.
Okay.
I like the optimism.
All right. So there you go.
There we go.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm just checking in with all of you. No comments? Okay. We were going to listen to a review of the CDFA language and how it...
On which definition?
I believe it was on page four, under definition 1C. And 1E has canopy...or 1E, I'm sorry. I'm writing on top of writing.
I texted the definition to you and to Judy and to Margaret. So I took a screenshot of what the state definition is in the January 16 thread.
I don't have my book on, Margaret. Do you want to read it?
Yeah, I'm happy to read that. Canopy means designated areas at a licensed premises except nurseries and processors that will contain mature plants at any point in time as follows. And there's three sections. Canopy shall be calculated in square feet and measured only using identical boundaries in the area that will contain mature plants at any point in time, including all of the space within the boundaries. Canopy may be non-continuous for each unique area included in the total canopy, shall be separated into... Subsections is how they're measuring it, not decided in the definition, but I'm going to read through it. I'll read that again. Number two, canopy may be non-continuous, but each unique area included in the total canopy cultivation shall be separated by identifiable boundaries that include but is not limited to inferior walls, shells, greenhouse walls, hoots house walls, garden benches, hedge groves, fenced in garden beds or garden plots. And if mature plants are cultivated using a shelving system, the surface area of each shall be included in the total canopy cultivation. So the question is, is we have the definition of canopy in here, and it's correct that we want to put all of the exception areas, we want to reference it.
Let's just reference the California code.
Which is what we've done, what we've done. Okay.
Because there's no reference to the code number, though.
Well, it changes until they've gone back.
And then that will allow us to change with the state.
Exactly. So if we reference it in terms of what their definition is, then we should do it safe from a legal perspective.
So the definition we have exists, Dave, is fine?
I believe yes.
Okay. And the only other thing was, somebody brought up that it'd be up to the inspectors and not the director, and I don't remember where that was.
That was in fencing, that's what I remember.
Okay. So I kind of think that might be an idea.
Well, my problem with that is, is that the inspectors are on the ground when you've actually done something. So you don't want somebody to build a fence and then they've got a guy who comes out there and goes, "No, that's not going to cut it." So having a fence saying, "I'm going to use red number two gang fencing, like 20-foot centers," I could think that a plan would be easier than going out and saying, "Hey, I'm going to put a bunch of pallets here."
So you want pre-approval rather than after?
Right.
Okay. I agree.
And then the inspector comes out and says, "Oh, yeah, you did what you said. We're moving on."
And remember, this is may, so if you feel like you need to put a fence, we're recommending you talk to the director with your ideas. You're not just putting up something that's kind of really a mess. So it's just another check point.
Sorry. Everybody has fences. They had to put them, well, many, they already had to put these fences through the last time.
Right.
They block them from people.
And that's, this is for moving forward.
Correct. Sorry, thank you.
So they're ahead of the game?
Yeah.
They don't have to worry about things you do over the project.
We've been hearing about fences and we're, you know, this government's taking a long time to get our heads wrapped around the fencing issue. Okay. Any other? That was all I had. Thank you.
I apologize, Supervisor Chadwick. I was trying to take notes, but the one that I did not get was your first one related to the transfer of the license.
So right now in the opt-out areas, there's a non-transfer as brought up. I'm asking for that to be removed, that they would be not redlined.
Thank you.
And Margaret, that's actually not in. We didn't put that in on purpose.
You were neutral. That was planning commission. I realize that, and I appreciate that. I'm just waiting in.
Okay. I agree. Thank you. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Okay. So there was, in terms of type 3, I'm just going back to the ag and type 3 requirements. Non-multiple license, sexual.
From the ad hoc or from the piece?
I'm looking at the ad hoc portion. Or limitations where the variance might be required.
You follow around the line with this fee?
Well, in the question is, is what we removed, which we were trying to, and the planning commission moved forward, that you wouldn't have to do a conditional use permit on the ag zones. Sequoia staff felt that they were uncomfortable with that. And then another point was, somebody felt that the setbacks should follow what we were going to do in the multiple licenses, and they didn't feel that that was a sequoia issue. I don't know if I would agree with that, but Rick doesn't agree with that. So again, from, though I understand the feeling, I think to be safe, that that would be something we would leave forward to in a fully documented.
The reason I feel that way is, one of the things, one of the measures is the impact of what you do on your neighborhood property by reducing those sentinel setbacks that might be different than what we've been using, might defer or change the sequoia document and/or change what we've been doing in the past and create problems. So we're just saying, leave it as is, and we'll deal with it when we get our REIR.
So, technical question for you, Rick. Since we're talking about a type 3 and ag land of one variation or another, they're required for CUP, which is going to come before the commission. So some of that environment work is going to get done. If you have a situation where an applicant says, "Hey, these setbacks are going to make me really, put me out of the, my prime ag land growing area and put me into having to take down trees," I mean, that's not good governing if we are causing another problem.
Yeah, we're in that situation...
So could that be revenue there?
Yeah, we're, we're...the one we were mainly worried about was the not using, doing the use permit. But if we're doing the use permit, you're looking at that, you can make those valuations depending on, you know, what the impacts are on all 19 things that you consider in the environment environment. So it could be in the valuation on the whole, made of looking at that.
So in this instance that was brought up to us, that gentleman in the CUP process would then go and ask for a variance to put it on his three acres closer because this is the farmland, I don't want to put it on the hills, there's no neighbors, blah, blah, blah.
That's where they could handle that.
Yeah, and it has to also be a situation which you'd be willing to grant that if it were to come up again in another spot. So that's one, is that, you know, variance we would consider.
So there's nothing we need to look at here?
I wouldn't put it in the not due process.
Okay. Just want to make sure, get some clarity around that without creating another problem. Okay. Any other? So someone brought the idea of lifting the 500 cap. I'm not saying that I'm here today to say that either way, but I just wanted to make sure those couldn't even be discussed until we knew what the environmental document came back as.
Correct.
And I just wanted the public to know that. And they could come back and say, "Hey, we really only think you need 300. You should do 300." They could say, "I think you're good for 800." I'm making up numbers.
Yeah. We will, that will be something, we're right now writing the environmental document for 500, and then that could be an amendment to the environmental document to increase it. But there we have standards that are set, and we can make measurable changes.
Okay.
I do want to make a point on that, that I would never feel comfortable doing that until we are capable of handling the 500 internally. It's unfair for people that fought through this and fight through our things that, and we're not capable of handling another 100 or whatever the number is. They deserve to have good service before we think of trying to serve other people.
And I wasn't advocating either way. I was just getting some clarification around the secret process and what they're looking at, so. Okay. I think...you got it? Captured in one way, we've got to tackle them. Fee study. Okay. I think that's it, unless there's something I clearly overlooked. Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Chadwick?
No, Madam Chair, but I would ask that any of the changes that we just made are read out clearly so we are in all agreement, that we know what we just did.
Do we want to just go through it real quickly? I don't think there's many changes.
Quite frankly, Chair, I think the appropriate thing to do at this time is to send these back so they all can be digested and then voted on the next time. I'm not a fan of making these changes, and then we come in situations where somebody says, "Well, that's not what I said."
Well, that's why I was thinking if county council wouldn't mind reading them back, because I think that's where we failed in the past. We didn't.
Well, we have the papers on the table.
I just think they can come back with a clean copy. We can do that.
Does.
Why don't we do that? It's clear, black and white.
Yeah, I'm not sure unless there's a rush that I'm not understanding, which is quite possible, that a 15-day wait so everybody has a clean copy of actually what we're discussing.
Yep, we can do that, too. That, yes, I would appreciate that.
Would you like to make a motion to table this item until the 19th of this month meeting and come back with a clean copy of the changes? Am I in trouble?
I will second it.
And I did look through my notes, and there's only three changes. That's what I thought.
I would, will you withdraw your second?
I will withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my first.
And I'm happy, either way, I'm happy to leave them out in the board and make the decision afterwards. And I also want to make sure I capture it.
Thank you. I didn't think there were many.
We are working off the proposed amendments from ad hoc. I'll go by page and by line number. The first change is on page 11, and it's item 4B2, and it's removing to the first section, which says, "On July 1st, 2019, during the period there, we're capitalizing the, and the remainder remains the same." The next one is on page 12. It's item 5B, sorry, 5B1, 56, and it's removing or by the California Department, including agriculture.
And we're also keeping it 200% if it doesn't state that.
It does, yes, it does state that, but we'll make sure it's very clear. And it, which also parallels what's in the definition. And then the last one is on page 15. It is item 8, sorry, item 9E, and it will change the may to shall related to fee study.
And I believe we missed, we didn't capture the one on page 11 that says when applicable, unless you said it and I didn't hear it, instead of taking the date out.
The one on page 11 where we took the date out?
She just made it. I did it, Director. Okay.
Yeah, she didn't add applicable. It just says the director name.
Okay. I didn't hear it. Thank you.
And we were, we were striking the unless you can license property zone agriculture ag preserve.
That would be B12.
B I Q. We are striking unless you seek a license for property zone ag, ag preserve, or ag forest. That is striking. So it's four changes. Thank you.
And the transfer of the opt-out?
That's not a change.
That's the ad hoc neutral incorporated in there.
Okay, it was neutral.
It wasn't in there.
I just want to make sure. Wait one minute for clarification. I want to make sure we're not, parties aren't talking two different ways. The ad hoc certainly was neutral, so are we allowing those in opt-outs to transfer their license and sell it to you and...
That's what the board felt.
Yeah. So is that represented currently?
Yes. It was never added into this.
Okay.
It was just a balloon...
Got it.
...on the side of the recommendation.
Okay. Other than that...
So would you like a motion to approve this addendum A, complaining zoning to incorporate these four?
Will you first reading?
Will you first reading and incorporate the four items, the four changes as presented and reported?
I will second.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Two red amendments?
Yes.
Two red browns?
Aye.
Two red browns?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and staff and council and my colleague. It seems like it took forever. Not today, just the process. All right. So we will move back into closed session. Is somebody, Margaret? I guess so. All three items that we met on direction was given to staff.
Are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.